Okay. Franklin County Board of County Commission in nine session. Commissioner Jones, with your leaders in the prayer and pledge, please sir.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given to each and every one of us. We ask that you could do this in this room today. As we discuss and make decisions about our today and every tomorrow that you might give us. Give us wisdom and understanding as we apply the knowledge you've given to us in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
So moved, sir.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous. Next on the agenda will be payments of the county bill.
So moved, second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masters. Question on, what is that payment to the Leon County Commissioner?
Uh, Mr. Noah, I'm gonna have to look that up once I get my, uh, once my laptop connects.
Okay.
Yeah, it may be, you know, our share of like the juvenile alternative sanctions coordinator, um, that's kinda what I'm thinking, but I will look that up.
Okay. Is that the Boulder County Commissioner Leon County? Thank you. Any more question, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous. Oh, next on the agenda will be public comments.
All right, Commissioner, public comments, anyone? Uh, I got, let me see, besides us, I got three more callers on the line. If you have any public comments and would like to comment during the meeting, I ask you now to click star six. Uh, I also like to remind the callers that once public comments is over, I will have to disconnect the call because we'll be using the conference phone equipment for two other calls during the meeting. So, uh, for today, the conference system will only be used for public comments. And after that, it'll be disconnected. Uh, I would advise everybody to go to the live stream. If for some reason the live stream goes down later on in the meeting, then we will have to reactivate the call in conference for everybody here. So, um, again, I'm looking for anyone that wants to participate in, in public comments, please. Star six, star six on your phone. And actually, I'm down to one caller besides us. Make one more call. Star six for that caller that's on the phone. If you wanna participate in public comments. The queue is still empty, so apparently no public comments today, Commissioner.
No public comments. Okay. Well, next on the agenda will be, you said no public comments, so next on the agenda will be Department Director Report. So, Lieutenant, Mr. Howard, please.
Morning, Commissioner Howard, neighbor and head of the road department. How y'all doing this morning?
Good.
It's got a couple of items there, uh, they some places y'all see growed up pretty bad, uh, East Point ninety-eight, Appalachia ninety-eight. Some in Landark of ninety-eight, Island Drive, Franklin Boulevard, which we used to maintain, which all, all that blame, blame owns the state right away, so we haven't been cutting that on account of shoulder of our inmates and stuff, so. If y'all get any calls about that, you, you know, and I've also notified the state also that we wouldn't be cutting it until, I hope that we get inmates back pretty soon, so.
Are we supposed to cut it, they, is state property?
Well, we've cut it for years, but, you know, right now, so short, real shorthanded, you know, we got twenty inmates. We was getting at the end, you know, but now we don't get them no more, so.
Yeah, I know.
I called the prison and they don't know when the inmates will be coming back out, so.
They probably ain't gonna let them out with the COVID.
No, sir.
Still, the COVID still.
Yeah, still, still, still out, exactly right.
But you know, um, Mr. Chairman, I think relative to your question about the county doing state work. And just thinking about Howard's budget, some of the monies we've transferred recently from Ballpoint Trust Fund. Perhaps, are we saying that there's, there's an even financial exchange when we use state prisoners? That is free labor in exchange for the work we do on the state right away. Is that the spirit of that?
No, no, they, they pay us. They pay us a certain amount of money to do them areas. And it's just the areas where everybody live, everybody walks on the sidewalk, bike path, whatever you wanna call it, so. Yeah, we try to, try to keep up, yes.
Okay, good. All right. That's news, I didn't know that.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Howard, if, if it's gonna stay like that for a long time, do we need to look at least temporarily go into a five-day work week? So you have more time to get to it with the people you do have?
Uh, you still, you still cutting yourself a five-day work week, you still cutting yourself two hours a day, so.
Yeah.
I mean.
Okay, all right. I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Howard?
Mm, you have.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, sir, thank you.
Have a good one, Howard.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Fonda Davis, solid waste, correct.
Good morning, Commissioner Fonda Davis.
Good morning.
Uh, nothing for Ash Niden this morning, that I'm aware on my report, uh, just wanna let you, you all know that I received some information from Dixie U League, ready to go back, start playing ball, so, uh, it's up to you all to, you know, let me know what we need to do.
Did they send a plan how they would go through that?
They did, yes, sir.
Okay. Y'all set it back with that play?
Yeah, don't you think, I asked Fonda, is that, uh, there's a question, there's a waiver that they asked for. Um, now, Mr. Gleason at the district told me he had a copy of a waiver, I didn't see it in the package.
I didn't, you're right.
I don't know if you wanna get Gleason's or, or deal with Attorney Schuler and see if he can do a waiver or whatever. But we do need to have a waiver on file for each child that's playing.
Yeah.
I would say that.
Michael, I've, I've seen one of those online already that some of the counties down in South Florida have done.
Okay.
Uh, related, just like you do related to injury, this is related to COVID nineteen.
Okay.
But still just a way before.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So.
And I, the only thing I, I was, you know, like to say about it, uh, in their plan, I don't see where it's no travel outside the county to play or either letting outside come in, so I don't know if we need to address that.
He has come, just, in talk, I haven't heard this from the local league, but in talking to Mr. Gleason, what he was looking, uh, considering is having a kind of a, I would say not a truly dea ball, but he was considering where all the cities that are playing around us that they would, all the teams would travel to a city on a specific weekend. They were doing that as a fundraiser, but I'm not sure how comfortable the county, the board is with that. Um, having, um, you know, different counties, uh, come to Franklin County and then taking the Franklin County kids to different counties to play.
Right about long enough, we just gonna play each other, right?
Yes, right now, the plan is to play, uh, within the county, inter-county, I guess you could say, sir. So Carroll play Appalachia, then they'll play East Point, they all play each other, that's it, nothing outside of the county. That's what the local plan called for, right, Mr. Davis? The local plan called for just, oh, no, I look, you look back when I say Mr. Davis.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it, it was, it called for just playing within the county.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I still wanna remind you the COVID is still out there. I mean, running up and down the road. I don't, we got it where the kid can, we give them something to do if we let them play ball in the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masters. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That pass, now what we, what that was for, what you approved?
Their plan, to be able to open up and play each other.
Yeah, I'm talking about each other, but we didn't, uh.
Yeah, no, exactly what they submitted us, play each other locally.
This include, did include out of town?
No, it does not, that's not what they submitted.
Yeah, their plan did not. That was, again, that was a discussion I had with the district, um, manager.
That's not what they submitted, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would recommend that the board also authorize, uh, Fonda to put up a sign that says by entering into the park, they waive their, the, the rightful student county.
Yeah.
They're, they're doing that at Disney and Wall Street and other places.
Yeah.
When you enter, you waive liability against the county.
Okay, you're not at your own risk.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a motion on that.
So moved, second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Parr. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous. Now, how many ballgame they pulled the hell?
They said they wanted to play twelve is what they asked them to play, but I don't think there's a restriction on it or.
I did hear that number twelve, but I didn't see it in the, in the package area.
I'm not even sure there's enough kids that are actually gonna come out.
But that's the other thing that they'll have, honestly, that, you know, they're not gonna be able to force kids to play, so. So maybe they're good enough.
And we got to go by guideline for cleaning up, when somebody use the bathroom, got to go in there and clean up behind everybody every time they use it or stuff like that. Do that exist in this?
They, they will, in the package said the bathroom would kept wiped down at all time, that's on them. And we'll do our normal routine, uh, every day we go around and clean, but.
Okay, but y'all ain't gonna be at the ballgame?
No, no, sir.
Gotta be, so that gonna be up to the league.
Right.
Who gonna be checking that? To make sure it's done?
We looking at it.
We can, I mean, we, we can make it work if that's what y'all want me to do.
Well, I mean, they said they gonna do it, but we got to make sure it's done, cause it gonna fall back on us if it, anything happen, um. That mean we'll have to have somebody out there at every game, okay? Leave one. Right now, you ain't get, your crew is not required to, to work at a game.
Right, that's correct.
But if we got to make sure this stuff is being done, we got to get it set up so he can put somebody out there on.
Mr. Chairman, you could probably accomplish the same way though, having somebody randomly go check. Like during the middle when they're playing, and, you know, I mean, you could do it the same way, without them having to be there the whole time.
They gonna get paid?
I think we, uh, with no tournaments and all, Commissioner, I think, uh, we can afford to fail a bit overtime now. Out of that use support.
I really, man, it ain't right for us to send nobody on there overtime. I don't like that kind of stuff, sending somebody to come and go checking around. If I were working and I got to go out to check, I wanna get paid. And them people do too. If they, you know, right is right. But what y'all wanna do about that?
No, I, I agree with you. I think as a, as a chairman, I think it's a good idea to have a, to have a Parks and Rec staff member there, um, at each game just to, you know, uh, monitor, make sure, especially the bathrooms, you know? The concessions aren't really our responsibility, but I think the bathroom is at a minimum. And, and to go back a little bit, like, uh, either Commissioner Jones or the chairman talked about parent, about kids not playing. I think there is an option in their plan, I just wanna make sure I bring it to everybody's attention, that if parents, if a parent decide they don't want their child to play, their child to play. I think they get their uniform shirt, maybe the hat, and a voucher of some sort that will go towards the credit that will be used for next year's registration. I believe that's what they, the, the league agreed to, locally, that's what they agreed to.
Yeah, I want them to play and have something to do, but I wanted to do it right. But while they monitoring the bathroom, you got to monitor the people too. I meant to make sure they doing the distance thing. I'm, don't they supposed to be, can they bunch together, don't they supposed to be so far apart?
Yes, six to the part.
So they got to monitor that too. It wouldn't, it wouldn't just be making sure they clean the bathroom, make sure they, whatever regulation we supposed to go by, whoever you got working, you know, tell them that what they, they checking on, CDC or whatever you call it.
Well, having a, a member of the county staff present just shows our intent to do everything right.
Right.
Yeah, sure.
And I believe, um, once they get started and they see we checking them out, they might not even, uh, might not need to have them out there if they, you see them doing the right thing. See how they doing.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, you're talking about three employees, not one, cause they potentially play in Appalachia, East Point, Carroll, and all at the same time.
Well. What, how long does a ballgame last?
It can be from one hour to three hours.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Oh, you dealing with a half-day work for three meetings. It ain't my half-day.
Yeah, I think it's durable.
And I, I think they're all, the coaches, the, the district administration, I think they're all responsible. I think they're gonna self-regulate commissioners as to make sure that, you know, because the, the last thing they would want, something to happen and, and some, somebody gets sick there and it, you know, it turns into, to, you know, to everybody, they can trace it back to a game. So I think they're gonna do their best to, they, they, you know, they have the kids at heart, and that's, that's what's important, so.
Well, they got the green light, tell them to go ahead for them.
Okay.
Be careful.
Be careful.
The next thing I, I need to talk about is the, uh, the walkovers down at Alligator Point. We talked about it last meeting, to, to remove them. We have one that's on private property, and I mentioned that to you all also. Uh, well, we was told, nothing's been given to us, a survey, a copy of the survey or anything to, to confirm that, so, but, uh, before we move that one, I would like to have some kind of confirmation that it is on private property.
And I would like to, you to have that as well. Um, Attorney Schuler, can you have a look at the, uh, plaque? Layout of this said property, I think you're talking of the vicinity of Chip Morrison Road?
Yes, sir.
Make sure we have that correct, okay?
Okay.
Okay, good. But we understand you'll, you'll begin disassembling the other walkovers, um, next week?
Hopefully tomorrow we start on, on Hall Point.
Okay, good. The purpose of disassembling those walkovers is that they're dysfunctional, unsafe for, as, as for now. But the public also knows that we're, um, pending a FEMA reimbursement for rebuilding those.
Right. And in the meantime, we wrote the same width of the, the doom walkover now, we wrote that.
Give them a margin to walk through, good.
That's correct.
That'll be, that'll be good direction.
On that private land, did we get all the, I know that we finna tear it off now, right?
Yes, sir.
But is y'all planning on putting them back? Um, at, anytime?
But that, like, Commissioner waiting on the, uh, FEMA.
Did they get all, did they get ever kind of permit to go on the people land in the beginning?
No, no, the county, this is when Joe Hammond was here, we, we made an assumption where the property line was, and the property line worked, went in an angle. It wasn't perpendicular to the road, and so the, uh, as I recall, the tip of the, the thing was just built, the, the, the property line went in the skew. We tried to go straight and anyway we crossed over the tip.
Oh, that's the one at Chip Morris?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if there's not an existing survey showing the location of the doom walkover on property, I would have to order a survey, uh, showing the location of the improvement before I would be able to advise whether the doom walkover is or is not on private property. If it is on private property, we can't remove it until we get the permission to land on it, enter on its property.
Right.
And, and I would make that as a motion.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Wouldn't it be cheaper to, as if the people would let us take it down? Doing all the surveys?
Oh, we're gonna...
To a republic property?
No.
Relative to Chip Morrison, that's a standby right now until we get a proper survey to know.
I said, wouldn't it be easier to ask the person, the property, could we move it? Instead of doing all the surveys, spending all the money and see if they'd let, sign the thing, let us move it?
I'll, we have to explore that option as well, Commissioner.
Yeah, 'cause it's gonna cost a lot of money to do the survey.
Probably, uh, I just ordered one for a private client, it's four hundred and fifty bucks.
You also going to have the same, Mr. Chairman? Whenever we go to put it back and we get the money from FEMA, we're gonna have to know where we're putting it?
Yeah.
That's right.
Either which way.
Make sure they am, yeah.
Just send notes on, on our property and not private property.
So you're saying that the survey that we just approved has a long-lasting value for, at this point? And the point would be, what's the order? We were, we're gonna still do the survey before we take that structure down? And then relative to getting property owner permission, that's something else we'll also do with survey in hand? Okay? That, that seems reasonable.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous, just make sure. I guess just make sure we ain't on nobody land. Clear the county.
Okay.
The next thing, Commissioner, I just wanna remind you all, the tipping fee for yard trash, it's still at forty-five all the time. We, uh, uh, everything else is at sixty-five. We getting overwhelmed with yard trash debris, we, uh, doing everything we can, we, I appreciate y'all voting to allow me to get the incinerator back on track, uh, the tub ground is, costs a lot of money to run it, I just wanna let you all know about that, something to think about. And also, uh, one question is that we, we been letting the resident dump yard trash free for, I think, roughly two years. So, uh, I want to know if you still wanna allow that, or we wanna go back to charter.
Place it a bold on that, y'all, y'all wanna talk about the deal?
Well, I, I think it already elapsed, 'cause we put a time limit on it to try it, I'm pretty sure it's what we did when we originally voted on that.
It, one necessary...
But, is it cheaper for us to go pick it up on the side of the road than it is for them to bring it to us?
We, good question, Commissioner, good question, but, uh, it hasn't slowed up either way, it's, it's, we still picking up.
Right.
And, and it's more coming in, uh. I mean, what have slowed down is the, the type of debris.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, white goods and construction, that has slowed, it's starting to pick back up, but it slowed down. Uh, the yard trash is still out there. We even getting people putting, uh, land clearing out there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, a homeowner saying it's their, it's their debris, they're cutting it down, but you know, you look at the size of the loads.
Yeah.
So it's, it's hurting both ways.
Yes.
Allowing it free and picking it up.
Yeah.
But it's forty-five dollars a ton, so y'all just, whatever y'all wanna do, think about it.
Yeah.
And I just heard you say forty-five dollars a ton, and the going rate's sixty-five now for other products?
Uh, the household.
Yeah.
And the CND is sixty-five dollars a ton.
That what you getting now?
Certainly.
You getting the sixty-five on that now?
Yes.
What's the other counties charging for the, the dump, the yard debris?
It ain't much, 'cause we, we seeing some of it, it's hard to prove, but we, we know it's coming in from other counties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially out to the east of us.
Well, I say it ain't much, I guess it, either they, they are not taking it, or either it's more than what we, we charging.
Yeah, I say a lot of that's coming from the east end, uh, talking about coming from other counties coming in dumping.
How do they do that?
They drive across that bridge, drive to Alligator Point, back up there and dump and leave.
Oh, they're, they're doing it on, I see, they're not coming to the landfill, they're...
Walco does not have no dumping, you can't dump.
I see.
And the people doing their contract work, they're, if they doing a little bit on Alligator Point, they're bringing their trailer full of stuff.
Yep.
That tear two or three boards off the house, Alligator Point dumped the whole load out.
Sure, yeah, I see.
They've been doing it for quite a while, Vonda's had a problem with it down there for some time, on that end. 'Cause in Landark, when he had that set up, it was constantly, remember dumping, people coming dumping shingles and tin and...
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Schuler. Oh, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it, uh, he got a price? And we got people come from out of, the county dumping, I mean, that, well, it ain't been proven, but we know and we don't know. But say, if, can we tell if people come from out of the county move, would that be legal?
I've not seen that done, nor do I know of that being done, but I don't know that it can't be done. I would have to look into that and get back to you, Mr. Chairman, but I, I'm not aware of that being done in other counties, I mean, what's, what's, you run the landfill, what do you, what's your experience in dealing with other counties?
Uh, no experience in other, but I, I, I think they... Whatever the county allows, if you allow out, out of county, I'm sure you can put a, a different tax, uh...
Don't say sure, we don't know.
Okay, all right, well, uh, I feel like...
I'll look into it and get, get back to the board.
Okay.
I mean, uh, they, they help filling our landfill up, and they not residents.
Right.
And look like, if they gonna do that, it should be a bit more.
You're not envisioning enforcing that at the game.
I don't know, I guess I'm, I might be wrong, but I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, just from a practical standpoint, Mr. Davis and I were just chatting, um, how would county staff or, uh, Mr. Davis at, at his department at the gate know whether the material, the CND or whatever it is, comes from another county? Uh, I mean, you could have a Tallahassee contractor doing work on, in East Point, and they take it to the, to the Appalachia or the Franklin County dump. I'm not sure from a practical standpoint, how we would go about enforcing and proving that it, it, it was sourced from a different county, even if we are allowed to increase the tipping fee for out of counties. Now, the, the only time I have ever heard of a different fee schedule was over in Gulf County, and that, that I think was relative to the beach driving permit, where they charged locals one rate and, and, um, non-residents a, a higher rate. But I, I've, I've never seen that applied to garbage, I mean, you start getting into interstate commerce considerations and federal regulations, I'm just not sure that the squeeze would be worth the juice in terms of how much money you would get and how in the world we would enforce it at the, the gate of the, uh, the landfill. But if the board wants me to look into it and see if we can, then I will do so.
There's no way to tell where it comes from.
They get a bidding permit, but what I'm saying is, well, I just was thinking out the box, so I get back in the box.
I, I think you've got a real good point, though, Mr. Chairman, you really do, because, uh, we know that that landfill has a limited shelf life, and we're gonna have to start planning on expanding that landfill property for growth, et cetera. And, um, the, the, the twenty-dollar difference in some products being put there versus others is something we should consider. Perhaps everything should be sixty-five dollars a ton, no matter what it is. Certainly, the effort to bring it there and, uh, by our county is huge, and maybe it ought to be consistently at sixty-five dollars a ton, just for the planning of the future of that landfill. What do you guys think?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we table this to the next meeting, so Mr. Davis can bring back his recommendation.
Okay.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Say.
Second by Commissioner Parr. But it's a way, you can track it, 'cause they get a permit rather than this, and then, you look at that commit, that permit. They ain't doing so much and they ain't hauling so much off these permits, so. You can kinda guess to me. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Can I just add another amendment to what we just said? Um, one resident of, it was Landark Village that talked with me about, once upon a time, there was a central location for all yard debris and vegetation at Landark Village, and everybody took it right there, and it was a central collection area. Is that realistic and, and something that could be thought of and put back in place again at Landark Village? I think it was on the, uh, eastern side of Oak Street. Anybody have a recollection on that history or anything like that?
I don't know, Vonda had a place set up down there, and it come out of hand, haul the household garbage, he was just constantly down there, they dumping everything, not just, they were dumping.
So it was...
All the household garbage, yeah.
Okay, so it was...
He spent days out there cleaning that one area up.
Okay. So we did it before and it made us sad?
Well, he'll tell you, he spent days out there cleaning that one side up, right there east of, uh, the old shop there, the, uh, plaza. Right.
Okay, okay, well, just, just a thought, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and...
People would buy it by the rules, it would work, but they are not.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Just, uh, Alligator Point trash pickups in the designated beach access areas, uh, uh, thank you, I know you had a volume of trash during...
Yes, sir.
The, uh, Memorial Holiday, and just appreciate you guys keeping all that clear, thank you.
Okay. We had, uh, some calls about the lead no trace ordinance, uh, we was a little bit behind, trying to get the fields caught up. But anyway, we back on track with that, now we started Monday. Yeah.
Okay. And your incinerator, it, that's all tuned up now and you have it overhauled, is that right?
Not completely.
Not completely, it's still work in progress?
I received a call on the refactory, uh, waiting for it to come in.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
We hit it there.
Yes, sir, I can feel that.
That's all I have, Commissioners.
Somebody got anything else from Mr. Davis? Keep up the good work.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm moving to share, just in case he, come on up, share. Just in case somehow, he might have to go on the call.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody today?
Good to see you.
All right.
Good, well...
Give me your name.
Uh, A.J. Smith, Sheriff Franklin County.
Okay.
Yep.
And wanted to discuss some parking issues that we've been dealing with, I guess, as long as I've been sheriff during the summertime. Alligator Point, which is pretty extreme, and then here recently, more on St. George Island. So, I'd sent a proposal about having a part-time enforcement person, not a law enforcement person, to do this, and, um, I guess the biggest thing would be where the money would come from to do it. And one of the things that's happening now, the deputy sheriffs that the county funds are not having time to do their law enforcement jobs, they're out being, uh, parking attendants. And I think that's a real waste of their time when there's a lot of other things going on, particularly in the summertime, that they need to be focusing on. Uh, a lot of huge traffic issue on the weekends, I mean, I could probably just about dedicate every deputy that works to enforcing traffic, because there's so many people coming and so many of them are driving in ways they shouldn't, as we saw on the bridge last week, and Alligator Point the week before that. Uh, bad crash down there, knocked out utility pole, some day trippers down there, um, driving how they shouldn't. And of course, when we're spending time trying to get cars towed and writing tickets, takes a lot of time and a lot of the resources when you're limited with how many deputies are working, so. Um, I ask you to, just looking for suggestions and ideas on how we might, um, you know, do something like that. The worst time for parking is certainly the weekends, during the summer, other times, you know, we really don't have an issue. So, a lot of, a lot of communities have a person who does strictly parking, you know, you go to Tallahassee, they have parking attendants, they write tickets, they tow cars, they do all that kinda stuff. Law enforcement doesn't have to do it, so.
How many people you talking about, share?
I don't know, I think a person at Alligator Point, which is our biggest trouble spot, and then maybe, uh, St. George Island, you know, Saturday and Sunday. And it's just, you know, like I said, it's during the daytime.
During the daytime.
Uh, somebody with no benefits, just strictly an hourly wage, that could, that could, you know, write tickets and help with cars that need to be towed. And, you know, we did, I think we, y'all addressed the issue, that's been a big help when we allow the wreckers to roam. That is certainly helping our Alligator Point issue, but it has not solved it, and I actually was communicating with some of the residents, um, last week, and there's an issue that is strictly law enforcement, it's what the people that come to the beach are doing at the beach. The indecent exposure, you know, urinating, or going under their houses, doing those kinda things, littering. So, I gotta get the deputies, if they're writing parking tickets, then they're not down on the beach enforcing some of those quality of life issues. And we're probably gonna have to do more of that as the summertime, uh, as it starts to heat up in the summertime, we're gonna have to get on to the beach down there, 'cause I've had a couple of people that, or more than a couple of people, they're talking to me about what's going on down there, and I know it is an issue. So, I wanna be able to keep them from having to, you know, if you stop, like, a couple of weekends ago when I was down there, just writing somebody one ticket, may take you forty-five minutes, you gotta, uh, if they come, you know, get them off the beach, and, you know, it takes time, it's not just a quick process, as with towing a vehicle, it's not a quick process, so.
How much are you talking about paying them an hour, Sheriff, if we didn't award a money or something wrong?
I'm so, you know, like, ten to fifteen dollars an hour, something like that.
So, is this something we're looking at, uh, just wanna be clear, you said non-law enforcement?
Correct.
So, how is it gonna help the issue if there's other things going on, they can't do nothing about that?
No, but the deputies can devote their time to those, you know, littering, um, indecent exposure, the other things that are going on on the beaches. Or just out doing, you know, a law enforcement job, because like I said, when you take a deputy and they spend seven or eight hours during the day writing tickets, and they're not out enforcing traffic laws, they're not able to answer priority calls because they may be out of place somewhere else, so, I mean, that's the issue that we're running into. They're spending a lot of time doing something that really a law enforcement officer doesn't need to be doing.
Do you think it's appropriate for law enforcement officers who are, uh, time off, would like extra work before we consider outside help? Is that, is that a...
I mean, their hourly rate, you know, time and a half is a lot more expensive than, um, a lot more expensive than hiring somebody.
Yeah.
Hiring somebody part-time.
Also, they would, they would roll over to time and a half if, if, if they had the weekend off and we said, hey, we, we need you to, if you'd like to consider, uh, parking ticket kind of things, and, um, would you like to have extra work, can you give the deputy that extra work without time and a half?
I don't think so, not if I'm calling them back into work.
It'd be cheaper to hire people like Sheriff said, than hire somebody part-time, I meant, uh, overtime.
Okay, okay.
I see what he talking about, and it, and he...
And I know we're still gonna...
You need to...
Sir?
You need, yes, you need people just, what you, what you talking about is, is a good thing, 'cause like, the main deputies, they get tired of writing a ticket like you saying, and somebody down here robbing or shooting it.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and they up there writing a ticket.
Yeah.
That ain't good.
That's right.
I mean, they need to be doing what they do.
It's a level of seriousness, that's right.
Right, they need to, you know, they job, they need to be protecting us, they got to protect the whole county. And you know, they not there writing a ticket somehow, and they got to drive back. It could be a whole lot of stuff in there.
Well, where can the money come from to do this? Where would we find money to, to?
Good question.
Well, if we're, if we're talking about a supplemental budget, that would have to be advertised, we'd have to have public hearings, we can't just supplement a budget in the middle of the year without the process. I mean, that's the way that works.
And I'm not saying they even have to work for me, I don't care, I just, you know, it does, I don't care who oversees it or whatever, I just think that...
That's a good point.
It's a real waste of the resources for a law enforcement officer to be... It's a real waste of the resources for a law enforcement officer to be writing tickets, you know, six or seven, eight hours a day on a weekend, the busiest time of, you know, especially when we are really, really busy, and they could be utilized, just like Commissioner Lockley said, you know, out catching drunk drivers, the speeders. I mean, even the golf carts on the island, that's such a big issue too, I mean, we're, you know... If we're down at, if we're down at Eleventh Street writing, like, one day over this past weekend, they were down there, kept ticket after ticket after ticket, those people were parking at the stop signs, they were parking in the curve. So, when they were calling about golf carts, that may be a while. So, you know, that's...
And this has a, this is a long historic problem, isn't it? We just, we've talked about this retrospectively years ago as well, it's not just the COVID issues today.
Well, you got to, what we gotta look at? This ain't gonna get no better. It, it's just the tip of the iceberg, I mean, the beaches, they come in here now, and you got the COVID. You got storm season.
Yeah.
They raining sand all over them. And they come in, I mean, they, they loading them up now, now when, once you go back to the new normal, or whatever they call it, normal, it, it, it just gonna be a continuous thing, so... My thing is, kind of, I guess, when we, we got to try to do so, but, now, you said they can't... Wouldn't they have to be up on the U to write a ticket? I mean, can't...
I mean, I think you could, I, I mean, uh, Mr. Shuler could probably tell you, but I think, uh, they could probably, as long as they're under some kind of government entity that gives them the authority to do it. I mean, I don't mind having them under me, but I'm just saying that's not, I don't care who does it, as long as somebody, as long as we get some people that could do that to free up the deputies to do their primary functions. That's, you know...
Now, that... Florida, they got to be, well, it's a tourist, tourist state. And they, they, they bringing in people without no condition.
Yeah, because it's not the local people that are doing it, I mean, they're, they're not, they're not the problem.
No, it's not, that's what I'm saying, they bringing in the day trippers, the out-of-timers.
Correct.
And...
And you look at people are exhausted by this, I've heard it many, many times, the same story at Alligator Point particularly, and Ballpoint now too.
And then, somebody not contributing, because somebody not contributing, and then that, them people who bringing in them people, rent them house, they paying them money? Don't they pull the, put, put some in the pocket for this kind of, they, they the one who making the money? They making make-a-buck in a thousand, not no penny, not no dollar. They making in a thousand, a dollar. Okay, they ain't contributing nothing for people. They, they, all they wanna do is put it in their pocket, but you, you bringing the people here, and they breaking envelope, I mean, the fact, the regular laws getting broke. It's not right for, it's not right for the citizens over this end to pay for that. I mean, it's not right for the people not on the beach. But the people... It's something missing him. Because it, they, they pull to contribute a little more money. They're sticking all that big money in their pocket, it, it's, I mean, it tourist, it's the tourist development, do they pull to be contributing? We gotta look at all this stuff, because it, it, it's not finna stop. I mean...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
You talking about using TDC funds for a parking officer?
You, they need to.
I don't think that's allowable, statute.
Well, they need, it, they statute need to be rewrote.
Well, that's the state, sir.
They wanna bring them, that's what I'm talking about, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
The statute need to be ruled, because they bringing them in, TDC, they won't, they bringing them in, they part of the... They putting it on this internet, bringing people in. And they, it's so much they pull to contribute.
So, if that's what you want, I'll make a motion, then we go out for an Attorney General opinion, if we can do that or not with the money.
I mean, I don't, I read the statute, I don't see what we can, the way the statute's written, but...
That's what the chairman wants, so I, I made a motion.
They, they, they need to be rewrote. There's something ain't right about that.
Second.
I got a motion for by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Before you vote, just, just on the process, in order to seeking A.G.'s opinion, I have to first write a legal opinion on behalf of the county, telling them what I believe the legal correctness of the request is, and I can tell you that my opinion is you can't... If I heard you correctly, using TDC funds for law enforcement, my opinion is you can't do that.
Okay.
So, I'll draw my motion.
Okay.
What I'll say.
Yeah. We got that portion, yeah.
No, no, that's fine.
Well, who pull the people?
Law enforcement is a general revenue obligation of the county, it's all paid for out of ad-borne taxes that are part of the budgeting process that you go through annually. So, that's where the, the funding source comes from.
Right, so we're back to doing a supplemental budget?
Sound like we need another penny taxes on just like that.
It still wouldn't help.
Wouldn't?
You, you, TDC funds cannot be used to replace general revenue.
For the parking and, uh, for him to hire someone to put it in, to help.
I have been asked, and, and then presently looking into, uh, bringing back to the board a proposal for the board potentially considering a one penny increase in the TDC tax and some potential uses, but I'm not prepared this morning to have that conversation, Commissioner Mass, I'm sorry.
Well, if TDC's not gonna pay for it, what, what are we giving them the penny?
Because they're promoting and advertising.
Sorry.
Sorry, they're promoting and advertising just as the board is directing.
You ain't promoting them people parking. That, 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 that ain't right.
I wasn't here, Commissioner, when y'all set that up.
Well, you, we can reset it. And you, you, what you, what I'm saying is this, why should we put a tax to go to TDC? And it's not gonna help, it's not gonna accomplish what we doing?
Well, it, it, depending on what you spent the, the money on, it might, because TDC money can be used to build improvements that serve the tourists, i.e. parking lots and structures that are more able to be controlled and to be managed properly. And that's what we don't have on Alligator Point, we just have these open spaces. And so, TDC funds potentially, of course, I haven't looked into it at all, can't, and they certainly can be used to build facilities to serve the tourists. So, there are some things you might be able to do if you had that money.
And it is somewhat unfair, you know, when, when you think about it, that we're spending so, so much, you know, to try to bring people here, and then we don't have the proper parking facilities to accommodate them, so that's something that, you know, we probably do need to look for a long-term solution.
Yeah, I mean, we, we advertising every day, I mean. And I'm not, I'm with the TDC, I'm gonna see them, but they advertising, and we don't have the infrastructure. We, we, we just...
That's the problem, Commissioner, you know, the money is being spent correctly in advertising.
Right.
Bringing the tourists to the beach, bringing the short-term rentals. What we don't have is the infrastructure to support the amount of tourists that we have coming here, using our beaches and the short-term rentals. That's the problem right there. So, I think the magic is, is, is trying to figure the balance, is what I should say, not the magic, is trying to find a way to use, maybe increase TDC funds to maybe have plans to, to create the infrastructure. It's gonna be long-term, it's not gonna be fixed this summer, it's not gonna be fixed next summer. But as we move towards, you know, having a long-term plan to use that extra cent to create parking, to create bathrooms, to create whatever it takes to minimize the, 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 the problems we're having with the increased, uh, tourism. That's, that's what it is, and maybe there's a way we can use that with input from the sheriff as to say, okay, as far as he is concerned, if we create the parking lot here in this manner, yes, that eases his deputies, the, the role that his deputies have to play. I hate this word, but Commissioners, I'm old, meter maid, you know, it, it's, that's what I know, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, but, you know, that's what I know, and, and that's what the problem is, you know, and so, but it requires a long, a long-term planning, and the willingness, willingness of this board to add another cent that the tourists have to pay when they come here to help increase the infrastructure that, so that, you're right, so that your citizens aren't bearing the brunt of, of, of paying for the things that the sheriff needs now just to enforce parking. I mean, I mean, you have the sheriff come in front of you, tell you that parking is a problem on the weekends. It has to be a really bad problem for him to come do that, Commissioner, you know, it really, really is. And so, we, yeah, but it's, yes, but it's long-term planning. And I, 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 I don't think I know, and, you know, I'm gonna repeat Commissioner Parrish, what he said over the years, you know, nobody wants to pay more taxes, not us locals, nobody here wants to pay more taxes on, you know, I agree, it's unfair to put this burden on the back of the people that live here and pay the taxes because the TDC, it's, it's like, no, no good job, no good deed goes unpunished, the TDC did an excellent job advertising. But here is the problem, the lack of that infrastructure, Commissioner, and that's what we all have to plan together.
Yeah, over the years, I have repeatedly, and got no, no response that some of these TDC monies need to be spent on infrastructure. Right when Mr. Blair was our TDC director, constantly brought this up. You can't go down here and check the mail at the post office, there's nowhere to park. I mean, this ain't an issue that just popped up yesterday. I have brought this up many, many, many times, it disboard me that infrastructure needs to be a part of what we're doing, not just advertising and bringing people, but if you don't accommodate the people when they get here, they go back home and say, you know, it's a pretty place, I loved it down there, but there ain't nowhere to park. And for years, we didn't have a public restroom in Appalachia, we do now, so we have moved forward some, but parking is still an issue, not only on the island, not only in Alligator Point, but in Appalachia, Oklahoma. Where people come over here to eat at these restaurants and shop at the shops, there ain't no parking. So, this is something that we've been going through. It's been brought up many, many times by myself, we went nowhere. And here we are again today, with parking being an issue across the county, at, at different places. Uh, I got one comment from a fellow down in Alligator Point, says people come there, but there ain't, there ain't no stores, there ain't no shops, there's nothing for them to do there except to come in and utilize public access, try to get to a beach. There's no restrooms, there's none of this stuff. Well, that's just another issue, no parking, no infrastructure in place, and that's what we're talking about here today.
That's what I'm saying, the, and the way it... I'm not ready to vote on putting a penny in the TDC until we rewrite that paperwork, saying what they gonna do. Because if you put it, if you give them a penny now, it gonna be the same thing, we can't do it, it ain't wrote like that. You've got to... It gotta be rewrote so they can... They bringing them in, they got to accommodate the people. The people in Appalachia, on the hill, or out there where smoking, living, we not bringing them people in. Why should we have to pay the tax? You not bringing them in. Why should you have to pay the, I mean, they, they, they come, come on Appalachia, come on Franklin County, beautiful place. Why don't they put on there no parking, no, or nowhere to eat? I mean, you got to accommodate, accommodation.
Sir, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What part of the TDC tax are you paying?
I ain't saying that, I ain't saying that. I said, we don't pull the, I'm talking about, we don't pull to pay no tax to, to put in no parking. That's what, it, it's not right for the citizen. It's supposed to be the TDC, they the one who getting the people in here, that's what I'm saying. You can twist it, turn it like you wanna, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying...
I'm not trying to understand anything.
They the ones, they the ones who advertise, and, uh, I ain't trying to talk it against the TDC. But if you gonna do it, you do it all the way, not half the way. You doing it half the way, Rick, Commissioner Jones, it's done half the way that we're, where it's set up.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's not... We got to, you got to have accommodation for these people to park. And it's not, it's hurting the Sheriff Department sooner or later, it's gonna be some fighting down there. They go in the parking, you, let them keep on parking in front of people's house.
If they fighting, the meter maids ain't gonna help, because they not equalized.
Let them go to fight, let them go to parking in front of them people's houses.
Well, here's, here's what I'll say, I think building the infrastructure is a great way to alleviate the problem, where we don't have to be parking attendants. But in the short term, uh, that's what I was asking for, some kind of solution, I mean, you know, you're probably to, hire somebody to do it through the summer, you're probably looking at eight to ten thousand dollars to have somebody at both places to do it on the weekends. So, that's, that's what I'm asking for, and like I said, I don't care who does it. I just, uh, would much rather see the resources and the law enforcement officers out doing the job that they're supposed to do instead of being parking attendants, and that's what is happening on the weekends.
We just have to try to figure it out, Sheriff, you know, see what...
Right, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm coming, y'all just, you know, think about what might be a short-term solution to get us through the summer, and, um, you know, that's, that's what I'm asking.
But we gotta have our tourists, because you rode through Appalachia, a few, two or three or four weeks ago, it was scary, it looked like it was something going on. It wasn't nothing, as weird as I've ever seen in my life.
But the idea is for more parking, you know, at Alligator Point and the island, I mean, that would certainly, if we could do that today, then we would probably have a solution. Because then they wouldn't park on Eleventh Street, and they wouldn't, at Alligator Point, we wouldn't have that issue either, you know, like, when you talked about doing the county park down there, hundred parking spaces. Stuff like that would probably fix the problem, so, all I'm looking for is a, you know, short-term solution to help us get through the summers, like Commissioner Lockley said, I mean, we're seeing record crowds here. I mean, every weekend is a Memorial Day weekend almost when the weather's pretty, I mean, there's so many people here, so... Uh, there really are other things, I mean, I've had a lot of complaints about traffic. I really could take everybody that works the day shift and put them out working traffic enforcement, just because of the steady stream and volume of traffic that's coming down ninety-eight, going to the various communities, so...
And too, Alligator Point don't really want them down there anyway.
True.
That's, that's the biggest issue, they don't want them there, and they gonna grumble and call you. Ain't St. George Island inviting them to come?
Yeah.
Well, we have two things happening right now, we have, we have the need to deter, deter, determine how we solve this short-term problem of parking enforcement. And then the long, the long term is how do we use that penny?
It's a, it's not a, this is a common sense solution fix. I mean, you, you build a parking lot. If you, if the land, can't get no land, you go up in there, somebody gonna run off at one of them. But you, you can go up in the air with a parking lot. And that, I'd rather see it flat. But it's gonna, right down here to the coat house, you gonna need a parking one day. We ain't got no parking down here for all the people who work here. They gonna have to put, I mean, parking is just an issue. We, we ain't got so much space. This is, this is small county, we ain't got so much space. And we getting overrun with the people here. They got two, three cars a piece. Then you got... The first thing you got to do is do a study and see how many people coming in here a day. They guesstimating it, this, that, and the other. But on a given day, it might be thirty thousand people in the county. Plus, you got the parking for the ones who him. So, some just got to be done.
Well, I would make a motion for the short term, that, uh, we give the sheriff a budget of, say...
I think we heard.
Mr. Kurt, we would have to have a public hearing on that, so my suggestion...
We could carve out some money for parking enforcement.
Yes, if, yes, if we actually try to increase the sheriff's budget from what was originally approved, um, it, it may be better if we can somehow find, um, a county department to actually, you know, perform that task, if they don't have to be law enforcement officers, we may be able to tag those that do the leave no trace enforcement, perhaps add those duties. You know, that, that may be something, because those are already part-time employees just for the summer.
So, you're, you're thinking, you might be able to find us some money to be able to do this parking enforcement?
Well, I mean, that's entirely up to you all, I mean, that's something that you can use your reserve for, for contingency, if you really feel like that's a, you know, wise use of funds, uh, beyond that, that's...
I got a question, how about all these workers that's working with Fonda? It's in that van temporarily, we got them for all summer long, and they being paid, why can't...
Well, they are being paid through the workforce program, so I'm not sure if that would be allowable for them, because we're not paying them directly.
Yeah, can you check and see about that, I'll just check.
I'm sorry, I walked in on that.
Uh, as far as the, uh, the workforce employees, they wouldn't be able to... Uh, as far as the, uh, the workforce employees, they wouldn't be able to do parking.
No, those workforce employees are strictly for Hurricane Michael recovery and any work related to that.
Okay.
So cleanup, yeah, so that's...
Mr. Chairman, also in the proposal, it calls for a vehicle. These people gotta have a way to get around, I mean, that's what the proposal calls for, a vehicle with amber lighting or something, isn't that in the proposal?
Yeah.
See, we don't even know what the total cost of running the program will be, more or less where the money would come from. Uh, it's not just the hourly wage, now, you gotta have a vehicle, you gotta have insurance, you gotta have all this other stuff that goes along with the program. And, and it seems like we're focusing on where we're gonna get fifteen dollars an hour, or ten dollars an hour, but there's more to it.
Yes.
And we don't have that information here. And, and furthermore, I don't know what county department could run this and know where these people at, are they working, or are they at home collecting money? Unless it's under the sheriff, somebody that can actually see, and I guess they'll be responding to you, because it also calls for a radio, right?
Well, not necessarily, I mean, they could just be in those areas.
I mean, radio is part of the proposal.
Well, they don't, we don't have to have a radio, I mean, we could probably find some less cars.
You don't even know what you're voting on here, is what I'm trying to tell you, it, it's the total cost of trying to run a program, and then it's trying to find out where the money's coming from. And what I'm being told is we're already gonna have a budget shortfall this year. Now, where are you gonna get the money from to run a program like this, and also, people may be losing jobs here, I don't know what the implications of COVID-nineteen is gonna have on the county budget, but what I'm being told is it's gonna be shorter than it was last year. Which means you gotta raise the middleage rate to get to the same number you had last year, unless you make cuts. Always has to be considered when you're trying to find money to implement a program that was not budgeted for. Just throwing that out there, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm for or against the program, I'm just saying, these are things that's gotta be considered by the commissioner here. And be willing to stand up and raise the budget next year, or this coming up year. And as Mr. Marone said, I don't wanna pay no more taxes. And the people I talk to don't wanna pay no more taxes, well, you can't have more services without paying more taxes. Or start laying people off, I mean, these are really your options, is cutting people's jobs and making room for another job to take care of this parking issue, I understand it's a problem, but how, how you reach a consensus of how we gonna solve that problem is something else.
Well, we need a workshop, but in the meantime, you the problem is here. We need, we, we figuring about, you gonna have to figure out what we got to do. We need to workshop on some, to find out whether, can we find some money, or what the TDC can do, what the other people can do. But, if, the problem is here. And it's... What do we do, tell the TDC stop advertising, come in? No.
No.
We, we get together, we dig it out, and we work it out, that's what we do.
See if them rental houses wants to put some money for it, or do, do, during the rainy.
Yeah, they supposed to be, they making the big bucks. They supposed to be putting some on this.
Mr. Chairman, one, one more thing if I might, if we take money out of reserve contingency, you gonna have to raise the budget next year to put this money back. So that we have a million-dollar contingency there, just, if we didn't have that during Hurricane Michael, we'd be in trouble. So if we use money out of reserve contingencies to implement this program, when it comes budget time, you gonna have to raise the budget in order to put this money back. Because I don't wanna see it get below a million dollars, because during Hurricane Michael, we almost spent it all. Because we had to have money before FEMA reimburses us.
That's right.
Two mile October, October be two years since Hurricane Michael, and we ain't even got that money back from FEMA. So you can't delete that reserve for contingency, if you don't use it, it rolls over. But if you start using it, it not only rolls over, then you gotta put some more money back in there to bring that reserve back to where it was start with. So all of this has to be considered when we're making a decision, and it all looks like to me raising the budget up more and more and more.
And Mr. Chairman, I want to be very clear, um, in, in no way am I faulting the TDC for doing anything wrong, I just want to be clear about they getting on the record, they're doing a very good job.
They doing a good job.
Doing what they do, that's right, we just give, give them the tools and a plan to work with what it is, and as Commissioner...
Another thing on TDC, TDC is actually limited by Florida statutes on what you can do with proceeds, and the two percent that we have in place right now does not allow for uh, the infrastructure spending, you know, it's very limited on what we can do, so that's one reason why there hasn't been a whole lot done for infrastructure out of the funds that we currently are collecting.
But it's crazy, everything we do, we fall, try to get the TDC to pay for it, they can't do it so much.
The state says no, yes.
Yeah, we are limited on that.
I mean, they doing all they can, you know, they doing, seem like...
And not to preach any more doom.
Yes, yes, right now, we're limited.
Commissioner Parrish is talking about the, the Reserve for Contingency Fund for storms. If I'm not mistaken, uh, your emergency management director will tell you, I think a storm is heading into the Gulf, here within the next day or two.
It is.
Which Commissioner Parrish actually told me on Friday that that was gonna happen, but, so, you know, here we go, the beginning of that season, so, you know. It, it, it's, it's a, we need to have a long, comprehensive discussion about this, and, and it has to be, these are long-term plans, Commissioners, long-term plans, not something that we can fix overnight.
Well, I'll tell you what, we did, we could thought of, but, don't you think? Them other counties, big counties, they had this problem, they done been through it. And we sit down and talk to them, and they, they can give us some advice on, you know, what they did. They went through it, they, they didn't have no, no overnight ride, and they had more people. But they had a problem coming up to get where they got, but they weathered the storm, and we were weathered too. We just got to figure it out, I mean, I, I ain't, the TDC doing a good job. But it's, somebody just ain't, it's a shit hot, there's somebody not paying. I mean, and it's not... People who not using that, I'm saying, like the taxpayers that paying abalone taxes, they not using the beach, a lot of them don't even go to the beach, why should they pay for somebody else? When the owners of them places, putting all their money in their pocket. They need to get up some, get up.
So, Mr. Chairman, any, anything, we're looking to further, anything the TDC can do to help alleviate any of this situation, I promise you we'll be doing it.
I believe it, they, they always have.
But we, we can't pay the law enforcement officer or the, or the ticket person.
They, they always have, and that, that's why I say, I'm not calling them, but when stuff like this, when you have these conversations, they gonna be in it, they name coming.
Well, I think, well, I think the good thing is that y'all are talking about it, and that you need to, you know, like I said, start putting a plan together to address it, because the parking in all these places, it's pretty much like the island, it's been how long? Forty years it's been like that, it's never changed, more people are coming, I mean, it's, so if, I would, I would hope that you would have a workshop like, you know, Mr. Marone's talking about, and come up with some ideas to, you know, and in the meantime, we'll continue to do the best we can, I mean, we're probably gonna put parking as a low priority call. And, um, that's gonna probably aggravate some people, but, you know, that's just the way it is.
And additionally, before we finish, TDC, Mr. Chairman, and rest of the board, we're also looking at a budget restriction on the amount of money coming in. So we, you know, we're looking at right now probably between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand of money we already have budgeted, but it's not gonna come in, you know, it's, we're past all that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yeah, go ahead.
On some of these parking issues, I'm, I'm hearing some complaints on St. George and other places where people pulling into private driveways. Can those individuals not call and have that tow, a tow truck come and get them out of their driveway?
They most certainly can.
Without calling you?
They can, if they would, yeah.
That's what they need to do.
Yeah.
I mean, somebody pulled up my private driveway and blocked me from getting out. I'd call a tow truck, you own private property, if you don't move tow trucks on his way, and get them out of there. Sheriff ain't got to do that, they're not allowed to block people in on, in their private driveways. Instead of calling the sheriff, I'd call a tow truck and get them off my property.
Well, a lot of people call us because they don't wanna confront these people.
Yeah.
They're afraid there may be some kind of incident if they do, so that's why they call us, and of course, we, we go there and, you know, because they could be charged with trespassing. They could be arrested, and of course, the homeowner, like you said, can call the, uh, wrecker company, but again, it's, you know, tied up with things that we really shouldn't be doing, but I think that if, you know, I know this is a long-term plan, like y'all are talking about, a long-term to get things where they need to be, and, uh, I hope that y'all will stay on track with that, and like I said, in the meantime, we're just gonna, parking is gonna be a low priority on, uh, what we're doing. And that means it may not get addressed right away, but, um, and then if you get calls about it, that's, that's what it'll be, we'll do, you know, we'll do the best we can, as we have been. I think the deputies been working hard and, uh, doing a good job trying to multitask and do all the things that they're required to do, and they do, you know, they do a lot, everybody's working from the top right on down, and so we'll, we'll continue to do that. Uh, continue to be team players, but again, just, you know, I hope that you do have a workshop and talk about how uh, to fix some of these issues, because you're right, if there's plenty of parking, then people aren't gonna park where they're not supposed to. And, um, and we are gonna, I think, we're gonna see a, a record summer with the amount of people coming here, and, um, I wanna make sure that the men and women, the sheriff's officers are out doing what they really need to be doing, which is, you know, protecting life and property and not having these, you know, wrecks on the bridges, our roads are treacherous enough already, and when people are not paying attention, or they're drinking, then it's even worse, and, uh, you know, so, we're gonna devote some time to that over the summer, probably gonna start some special enforcement initiatives to slow some of that stuff down, and hopefully, you know, save some lives.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion direct, directing county staff to, uh, examine this problem and, and, and see where we need to go is to find a solution to this problem that the sheriff's referring to.
A second.
I got a motion on the floor. By Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Burke. And watch that discussion. If you will, what y'all looking into this thing, find out the do's and don'ts, don'ts. Or who's supposed to be participating in what.
Yes, and I agree, and, and inquire other sheriffs around Florida, what are they doing about these current situations as well?
Find out do the, the people who got the bit, do the business for to help. Find out who can help, or what tax we can use. Because we need to know all this. What we wanna do is put everything on the table.
And see, um, Mike, while y'all doing that, see if there's any civic organizations that can help fund some of this stuff in the different locations in the county.
That's a good idea.
Uh, to help come up with some private funding, rather than us having to jack up these abalone taxes, there may be some civic, there may be a civic organization in Alligator Point that I don't know about. Could be one on the island that would be willing to help contribute if, if the island feels like the parking is, you, you, you sell some alternative funding sources.
Yes, sir.
A, as it relates to our budget shortfall this year and everything. Just look at it from a total perspective and see what we can come up with to address the problem. In the short term, we know what we need to do kinda in the long term, or we, we need to come up with a plan for the long term also, but...
And look into, uh, with the Piers, that money what we, eh, can we check and see can we spend any of that money with?
Give me like Triumph or...
Triumph and all that, yeah, they got a lot to...
Restore, you probably could do some stuff with, but Restore is virtually a long-term solution, because you have to go to the US Treasury and get an amendment to your plan. I mean, it, could you spend some money, you might be able to, but it won't be this summer.
I know, I know, but, that'll be good, I mean, it, it, it's just the tip of the iceberg, and we got, it, we need parking, but long after we can, well, long after we go.
Well, and, and I would say, eh, eh, for St. George Island, because we already looking, we're doing a stormwater plan using Restore money, and hopefully the, uh, the planning for that'll start here in a few months, we'll advertise for a, a, a firm to do the design work for a stormwater plan, but that stormwater plan was going to include parking issues. So that we incorporate the right of ways for stormwater and parking, so we are, we sort of are making progress on St. George Island, Alligator Point's a little bit different. And I will say just parenthetically, a couple of years ago, Alligator Point Taxpayer Association, I'm not gonna speak for them, because I'm not a member, but they had funds available and were looking at options as a, as a civic organization on Alligator Point, so they, they, they would probably be a partner in this.
I think they wanted to hire, um, part-time, definitely something.
So maybe they, maybe they could use that money to hire a traffic, this, this traffic control officer that Tony's talking about, that don't have to, that, because I feel like our budget's gonna be short, and I don't wanna increase up no more than we have to. It is absolutely necessary, and I see that coming, uh, so I, you know, just look at these civic organizations, see if they're willing to help alleviate. In other words, you know, it can't all just be dumped on the county, we all have to work together to solve, to come up with a solution to some of these problems.
And with Alligator Point, I've also heard sentiment from members of the association there that they might consider funding some of this issue.
There you go.
Yeah.
That we can do probably right now.
Is certification needed, is there like a class or something, no?
I mean, it's probably training that's needed, but, I mean.
No, that's good.
Doesn't take a whole lot to write a ticket.
I know, but, you know, you still have to understand ordinances.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah.
Can we get a, kinda like a time y'all, how much time y'all gonna need to get back with us?
Working as quick as possible, Commissioner, and get it back to you, let you know. I guess at some point we could discuss this at a workshop, is what you're asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Set up one, or tell us when we can set up.
Yeah, I'll probably be able to tell you at the next meeting when we can set up a workshop, if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
Be, that'd be fine with y'all?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just one committee.
Yeah.
And I know we had talked about the last meeting about, uh, a workshop and discussed the boot issue for the cars. That certainly would make our job easier and the wrecker companies that are dealing with the multitude of people that are illegally parking, so, there just may be another solution that maybe we can talk about it at that workshop, and maybe get something done with that.
So you want that added on?
You're already working on that? Well, I think Tony Shul is working on, on amending your ordinance, so that requires a public hearing, which is slightly different from, from a workshop.
Okay.
That's, that's a more, where our decision will have to be made on, on the amendment of the, um...
When do you anticipate having that done, or we could have?
That fine gentleman is right next to you.
I like the idea of tying both the issues together, because, eh, eh, as opposed to having a piecemeal approach of me just presenting an amendment to your ordinance, and then you're having another subsequent workshop talking about a more comprehensive solution or plan to address the parking issue, I think we should put them both together in the workshop setting, and then once a decision is made, move forward from there.
Okay.
But that would, that's just my recommendation.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yep.
I had a piece of property on Alligator Point, I'd be renting it if nothing on it for parking.
Yeah, and somebody did that, I believe, on their residence this past weekend.
Yeah, a guy did do that, it was a small parking lot, yeah, he was charging, yeah.
He was charging twenty dollars a pop, getting thirty, forty cars, he was doing good.
Yeah. All right, anything else for me, I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to this.
We need a vote.
All right, thank you.
We need a vote.
We wanna vote on this now.
All right, y'all ready, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the pass or no?
Thanks, Mike.
I think the public needs to know, we spent over a half an hour on this issue, and we do care about this issue, and we're moving forward on it.
Yeah, but we... Okay, next on the agenda will be emergency management, Ms. Graham, I'm gonna name her.
Yes.
Sorry to hold you up.
Pam.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning. Oh, hey, Pam.
Um, I have, um, three action items this morning. Uh, the first one is requesting the board's approval and signing of the following grants. Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Um, the second one being Emergency Management Performance Grant COVID-nineteen Supplement in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-nine cent. The third one is Emergency Management Preparedness Grant Assistance in the amount of one hundred and five hundred thousand dollars, eight, eight hundred and six dollars.
Second. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masser. Second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the pass or no?
Okay, the, uh, sex, second action item is request the board's approval and signing of, of the non-congregate sheltering checklist.
Pass the vote. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by two, Commissioner Burke and Commissioner Masser. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the pass or no?
Okay, third item is request... Okay, third item is request the board's approval and signing of the non-congregate sheltering request letter to be sent to FEMA for approval. That is asking them, um, to, for reimbursement of COVID-19, uh, sheltering cost.
She'll move.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Mast. Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The pass or no?
Uh, just for, uh, the board's information, when you look at that packet that Jeannie did for projects out there, anything that says obligated, the county already has that money. You have nine projects, I think it is, that are held up in FEMA. Uh, everything else has been paid to date.
Um, where does Storm at now?
Right now, it is, uh, still not made it into the Gulf yet. The projections are, yeah, the one, Amanda, that was in the Pacific, has crossed over the Yucatan and will be in the Bay of Campeche probably by tonight. They're saying about middle of the week, we could, we possibly could see something. Predictions are saying that she's gonna turn around and go back overland and then pop back out and head towards Louisiana or Texas. But again, it's too far out right now tonight. That's just predictions.
That the only one you got to talk about, that one?
Yeah, that's the only one that's, that's gonna be in the Gulf here in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Okay, now. We got another situation?
That's the third one, ain't it?
It will be when, when it pops out to the Gulf. It's, I think, it's gonna be named Kristoff, I think.
Begins with a C, so that's the third one. That's the third Atlantic Gulf, um, storm already, yes.
What we got, we got a bit of a problem.
Till it's what, June 2nd?
What, what's going on? Now, we got everything straight, but this thing between the COVID and the East Gulf, it could be a bit of a mess there. I mean, you know, if we got to evacuate, we got to find people. So it's, how we doing with it? We all right with that?
I'm working on the plan. That's what your letters that you're signing is for. If we have, um, someone in the county that has COVID-19 or has been exposed to it, federal government says we have to quarantine, and the state says the county's on their own to find shelter for that. So I'm putting the plan together, and then, um, I will get with, uh, Michael Schuler if I found a hotel that accept COVID-19 patients on as far as some kind of agreement being written up.
Ms. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, this is a question I asked Pam about, you know, you gotta put it down, what we were talking about deposits for different rooms. Uh, and if you send them to a room in, in, like Tallahassee, go up there and you rent some rooms for people that might have COVID or might been exposed to COVID, blah, blah, blah. Uh, and they're the first place to go out of power. Now you got people that you have sent to a motel that are sitting in a block room with no windows in it, no power, no air conditioning, no nothing. And the next issue is, is if you put them in a hotel because they have been in contact with somebody with COVID, and they come down with COVID, who's gonna be there to take care of these people?
Yeah.
Who's, what kind of medical, I mean, who, who's supposed to be there to take care of these people? If they've been exposed and they come down with it in the middle of a hurricane? Uh, who, who's supposed to be there to keep these people going? Man, it don't make no sense to me the way the state and federal government's going about this. We ain't got the medical personnel here to send to any given place to take care of these people, and then wherever you send them, if they go out of power, who's gonna go up there and get them a generator and hook, you know, I mean, it just, there's so many questions with how this is being handled. Uh, I, I don't know how it's gonna, again, now you talking about, uh, taking advantage of the county budget. Again, this is money that you gotta spend that you ain't budgeted for, which goes back to reserve a contingency, I guess. And we have no earthly idea, now we have a hurricane coming to the Gulf, as y'all were saying earlier. How are we supposed to prepare and pay for all this stuff as a rural county? I, I just don't understand how it's all working. I, I really don't. I mean, I, I don't know how it's all gonna turn out, or how. We ain't even got paid for stuff from Hurricane Michael, as you can see on this sheet from two years ago. Now, if we spend a bunch of money to take care of a bunch of people that might have COVID, when are we ever gonna get that money back? I mean, I don't know. It's just, it's just one problem after another, and I understand, uh, Ms. Burnell's point of view because we got a storm coming in the Gulf now. Where is all this come from? Where does all the money come from? Just as we were talking about the, with the sheriff there a while ago. Where are we supposed to get the money to tackle all these problems and provide healthcare for these people that might have COVID? They gonna call us soon as power goes out. Y'all put me in a room, but now I ain't got no power.
Everything fall on the county committee.
Yeah, I, I don't understand where it's all coming from, and I don't understand where all the money's coming from, and it may take you ten years to get reimbursed for it. I mean, it's just one thing after another that people, I don't really think, understand what this commission has to deal with on a day-to-day basis. And it just keeps piling up. We never get caught up, we never reach a plateau, and everything goes smoothly as we plan. It just don't, and that's the importance of having this, again, of having this reserve of contingency and not messing with it because we could very well run out of money as a county if we was to be impacted by another Hurricane Michael in the middle of COVID-19. I mean, I don't know. Can't burn the country down, so we in a mess. Well, I mean, it's just one thing after another. My bus start praying. I just don't know how it's all gonna work, and I don't understand how they expect a rural county like ours. And we've required, we have acquired no monies out of the CARE Act for this COVID-19 to help alleviate some of these issues that we're facing because we don't have five hundred thousand people in our population. So we don't qualify for nothing.
And he sitting up there on the money. He got it.
I don't, well, if they got it, then the state needs to spend the money and take care of these people. We can't. As a small rural county, how are we supposed to take care of everybody? And I don't know how many people's gonna run down here and say, you know, I went to Tallahassee the other day and I might have been exposed. I need a motel room too. How many motel rooms are we gonna have to get? I don't know. I just don't understand how it's all gonna work. I don't understand how we all gonna pay for it. I don't know if Department of Health would be the one to certify that this person has been in contact, so y'all need to get him a room? Or does people just come to us and say, I need a room. I might, I might have been in contact. I don't know where it's all ending and how it's all being performed. I really don't. Don't be a mess too, Pam, because if you have a hurricane, they're not gonna open their shelters for all these people to pile in.
Y- yes, sir. General Pop shelters will be open.
They will?
Yes, sir. Uh, your special needs shelter will be open. Uh, and the answer to your question is yes. Department of Health will certify who needs to go to a quarantine. Uh, my job will be to, in my plan, address hotels that have generators. You don't send anybody to a hotel that doesn't have a generator. Uh, had a meeting with the Department of Health yesterday. We discussed this, um, sheltering issue. They will be responsible for daily calls into these people because we will coordinate where they're going, who's going. And at any given time, if they feel this person is getting worse, then they will send, uh, an appropriate healthcare person to that person to figure out whether they need to go to the hospital or whether they can still stay sheltered in place.
Well, I mean, that, that answers some of the questions that I posed.
But the answer to the money, Commissioner?
I'm sure there's many, many more, and the money.
Yep, I mean, the, I, I sent you the email I got from the state. I mean, the state's basically saying, it's on the county, it's on the county. Now, we have started, uh, some of our COVID-19, uh, PA work that is open. So we're starting some of that, try to get some of the money back into the county that we've already spent. Again, uh, I'm gonna try my best to, um, enter into some kind of MOU rather than trying to put a deposit down, but finding hotels that will actually, um, let you have COVID in their hotel. Again, they don't know what they're getting in when people call, but again, you've got to tell them that these rooms are for, uh, COVID-19 patients or people that have been exposed. But that's part of my plan that I'm working on now, started it yesterday. I'm about halfway through it. And then it'll come down to, again, uh, contacting hotels and saying, do you have a generator? And this is what I need, and can we somehow come out with a MOU? And maybe two or three hotels that if you have rooms at the time that we need them, um, could we possibly get these rooms at this price? But again, that will be worked through with Mr. Schuler over here to make sure everything's, um, the way it should be to protect the county.
Oh, one more thing, Ms. Ms. Chairman, are we gonna be responsible for paying elevated rates so that they can hire these cleaners to come, come in and disinfect and clean those rooms once that COVID patient leaves? In other words, if I go in without COVID, they gonna charge me a hundred dollars a night. If you go in with COVID, who knows what they gonna charge? And is that gonna be, uh, reimbursed by FEMA? Because these rooms are gonna need elevated cleaning and sanitizing and all, you know, it's not a normal, just a maid goes in and changes bed sheets and mops the floor. It's gonna need more than that, so they're gonna charge us more than that.
I, I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner, but in my opinion, if you run a hotel with COVID-19 out there, you ought to be disinfecting it the way you should every time somebody checks out.
And that's gonna cost them more money, which is gonna raise the rate of the room per night, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, it, 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 it probably is. They probably already attacked, already tacked that on to their room rates.
We shouldn't have nobody going because we ain't got no cases, so they can't use us.
I, I still have to plan, Commissioner. We still have to plan.
I mean, but really, we ain't got no cases.
No, sir, and I hope it's.
Free motel rooms or get there, we got.
We just send them with general public.
Because you said they was gonna check them and make sure, didn't you?
Yes, sir. We, unless the Department of Health tells me that, you know, John Smith has COVID. Uh, he needs to, him and his family, if he has a family, has to have, um, isolated shelter. At that time, then we would call the hostel that we already have an agreement with and a price set uh, and tell those people where they need to go. Hopefully, they'll have a car because that's another issue for us. If they don't have transportation, then we have to provide that, which means I have to negotiate that with transport, with somebody to transport them.
You providing them with a car without a driver or with a driver?
No.
If.
Disadvantage, probably. That van, yeah, that van.
Lucky taxi.
So, let, let, let me get this. So, yeah, so I, I, I hold, I, I own a motel, hotel, whatever, with a hundred rooms. And what you'll be asking me is right now, beginning of hurricane season, to commit to Franklin County a certain amount of rooms with a certain rate during a hurricane and evacuation, where my rules then become premium to have an agreement with you to hold rooms for potential COVID-exposed people? Is that what you're telling me?
Yep.
You're, you're absolutely right. That is why Leon County only has fourteen rooms. And it's not, it is not at the best hotel, if you get in the drift.
It seem like, Ms. Chairman, it seem like to me the state would just go in and rent out four hotels to be utilizing this matter.
Commissioner, they would create, uh, uh, somewhere that would hold, a shelter that would be specifically for this region for all the people exposed to COVID. Uh, to me, that would make sense.
If the storm hits towards Franklin County, ain't nobody going nowhere because you can't go out of the county, you can't rent nowhere. They don't want you there. There's no food, there's no wa, you're in a mess. You better pray to the Lord Jesus Christ.
Well, tell me this. We, I mean, Bay County didn't expect to get hit by Hurricane Michael the way they did. Nobody did. You know, I mean, and look at the havoc it wreaked across the region. So what hotel you gonna go to?
You ain't gonna leave Franklin County because ain't nobody gonna take you.
Yeah, where, where are you gonna go?
You're not going nowhere.
What about, they, nah.
Anyway, somebody smarter than me, so they'll figure it out.
No, where you gonna go?
Who gonna drive them people? Uh, ain't nobody.
Good luck, Pam. That's all I could tell you.
We gonna get a lot of juice, you drive.
Pam, what does that MOU stand for that you mentioned?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Rather than putting a deposit down.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I certainly don't want to prejudge a negotiation that hasn't yet occurred. But I do think it would be, hoove me to get on the record, a, a, what I believe will end up being an insurmountable legal problem to this whole process. I, I would imagine, I would anticipate any motel is going to tell Pam that Franklin County has to provide an unlimited indemnification to them for this, which we cannot do. So from a legal standpoint, we may be just going through a planning process that never crosses a finish line. It may not even leave the starting gate because we cannot indemnify a private corporation through the use of the full faith and credit of Franklin County Government.
Good point.
So, I'm, like I said, I'm not prejudging it. They may not bring it up. But if that is a, a condition of their agreement that they want to enter into with the county, then the answer is no. Legally, we cannot do that, and the federal government will just have to, you know, reconsider their position on what our obligations are.
Ms. Chairman.
Ain't it, wait a minute, don't we pull the hell, we got some sets over in here now, right?
No, you gotta make a plan.
We get, we make a plan. Well, we tell them we, Mr. Schula, wouldn't it be all right? Wouldn't it be all right? If we tell them, we don't think, they playing with the, they, they need to come up with something better. I mean.
I'm not sure that we can tell the federal government that.
I'm talking about.
They can't tell us to go through a planning process, but what they can't make us do is violate the law if in fact the process they create leads us to that point in the negotiation. And like I said, I'm not prejudging the negotiation, but it is not unusual. I mean, just the, the contract that I was just reviewing for the, the new EOC building that's being, uh, or going to be, uh, designed by our engineering firm. I had to strike out like three different indemnification and limitations of liability and strict performance and other conditions that they try and put in these contracts. Now, they've agreed to strip all of those out. The federal government probably is an even movable object, but, you know, we cannot simply agree to indemnify some private corporation using the full faith and credit of the Franklin County taxpayer. So we're not gonna do it.
I tell you what they do. Anytime that state come in here, talking about, we passing it and we putting it on the county, letting the county do it, and they, and them people ain't right. They, they, they be up to some mess every time, every time they, they pushing stuff down here. That's all.
And what Pam is saying too, is if she's gonna get a motel room, she's got to, she gonna hold forty rooms open. She got to pay a, a deposit down, and we gonna lose that deposit. If, if nobody even went, we lose the deposit.
It's not reimbursable either on the.
Right.
No, it's not. Leon County has.
If you got forty rooms and you had to pay it, we don't, and nobody using, we don't get the money back.
No, Leon County, I think, uh, Kevin told me they paid, um, twelve hundred dollars is what their deposit, again, on these rooms that are by the hour rooms.
I know where you're talking about. You told me that's a good area.
Again, that's all he could, that's all he could find. I mean, hu, big hotels, they don't, they don't want your COVID in it.
Well, what, what that governor need to do is use that governor mansion for them COVID people. That what he need to do. It's big enough.
My suggestion to you Commissioners is maybe y'all write a letter to your governor addressing this. Uh, and I, I'm with you. I, I don't know why you couldn't, uh, open a school.
Right, yep.
Again, and.
Well.
Put them, designate it strictly for that.
Yeah, if it ain't, if it not in it there, if they coming in.
Yes, Michael, you have, but you think about this.
No, I got you.
The pop, uh, pop, you know, general population, people are going, and again, they may not have been caught by the, you know, the health department. They're in the early stages.
Well, I'm with you.
And you've already got it in your school.
Yep.
Ms. Chairman, real, real quick, I worry about the liability of the county. Sending people to a motel and, and, and what all goes on there, where does our liability stop? Or does it stop? We're the ones taking them to this motel, or, or what is the liability risk to this county overall? Somebody's got to feed these people. They can't go out in public and get nothing to eat. I mean, and I understand DOH is gonna do some of this stuff, but where's our liability stopped? If we pick them in Franklin County and we send them up there, makes me feel like we're liable. Now, whether we are or not, I don't know. I have to refer to the attorney on that one, but, I mean, it's just a host. but, I mean, it's just a host of issues with this non...
Congregate.
Congregate shelter. We ain't never had to do this, I mean, it's just, where does liability for the county stop? Or does it?
That's a good point.
We pick them up and we send them up there, we get them transported up there, so they're going because we took them, when is our liability stopped?
Do we have insurance to cover anything like that?
As far as the health, safety, and welfare of these individuals, should we have to transport somebody for this? We don't know if we will or not. Hypothetically, I would like to look at it and say, you know, if we do, let's have a plan. What is our plan? Just assume all liability? I don't think that's good for the taxpayer.
It's not gonna be good for us either. You shipping some out, and then a lot of people ain't gonna be able to leave, you ain't gonna be able to get out of county, but we sending this people to be here, it's gonna be a mess, because a lot of people ain't gonna be able to leave this county if the storm comes. They haven't worked, they ain't got the money, everybody gonna rent them a room.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Because it's telling you right now in some places, they ain't even renting rooms. If you're certain places, you can't get a room.
This ain't Ms. Pam, Mr. Chairman, it's not Ms. Pam's...
No, she's trying.
She's doing what she's being directed to do as the EOC Director in Franklin County. I understand that, but I have to look beyond that. You know, I have to look down the road, I have to look at the future, not today, but where are we headed and how we gonna get there and who's gonna pay for it?
And the rooms that Pam's talking about, bless her heart, they gonna walk to go to.
I had a couple of thoughts. Certainly, this is new frontier relative to any liability insurance. When we see certain issues in the county, like what we're doing right now, do we actually have language in our liability insurance policies to cover anything like that? Should we have a contingency problem?
We have a lawyer.
So, yes, that's what we ought to be thinking.
Ask the insurance company. I doubt they have a COVID waiver at this point, but I don't know Pam, or Aaron. Has our insurance carrier sent you any amendments to our current policy concerning COVID?
For first responders and law enforcement, they do have some coverage available for workers' complaints with COVID-related issues. However, I would have to get with Aleah Smith to see public general liability concerns.
Let's do that.
Nobody's ready for this nowhere in state of Florida. There's nobody ready for this that's happening right here, nowhere.
Yeah, that's right, I'm sure.
It can't, it can't. With all the stuff that's going on, there's no way.
Well, that's why we need to reach out to our fellow Commissioners in other counties to find out how they're debating this same issue.
Pam's got her hands full if a storm starts this way, because people's not gonna be able to leave, how you gonna get them out of here, where you gonna send them? Pam and Jennifer, they're gonna have a mess.
Pam, have you thought about, is it possible that we could utilize our hospital in any way for that? Can you tell me that story?
If we got evacuated hospital, that's close.
We have to evacuate.
Can't have no shelter in Franklin County, period.
Yeah, we have no shelter.
No shelter.
We walk...
We got to leave there.
That's late here.
How much liability do we assume when we take these people and put them somewhere? That's my whole issue.
Yes, sir. Yep, there you go.
You know, everything we touch calls for money, money that's unbudgeted.
Pam, right now, you're just working on a plan, right?
I'm working on a plan.
So we're getting way ahead of ourselves, gentlemen.
I have to, we're having to amend our shelter plan, but...
And then at some point though, before the plan's effective, the board has to adopt it, right?
Yes.
Well, let's worry about that when she finishes the draft.
That's what Attorney Schuler was trying to say, that basically, this might be a nonstarter, it might go through this process and it never gets off the ground.
I'm hoping that we don't have any, but we're required to have a plan, and the documents that you're signing today is to get to FEMA, so if we have to put them, FEMA will reimburse us for seventy-five percent of that. To address your concerns, Commissioner Massey, we will still run our transportation disadvantaged buses, just like we always have, so people in this county that don't have money for gas, don't have a place to go, those are the people that will go to your general population shelters.
They get right on the yellow dollar.
Okay. And there's some gonna be open?
Yes, sir. Leon County, I've already addressed this with Leon County, because I was concerned about especially the special needs shelter, because that's twenty-six rooms you would have to have, but special needs shelter will be open, our Health Department will be helping work that, which, and then the general population shelter will be open, so will Liberties. And again, we can't, unless we pick them up and take them there, we can't tell, designate where people have to go. So, we know that our transportation disadvantage, we always take them to Leon High. And again, once you, once you drop those people off, they are, I hate to say it, they're the responsibility of Leon County at that shelter until we pick them up, bring them back.
Because I just noticed that's gonna be a bad hurricane season. I'm just worried about what's gonna happen down the road, because...
Everybody already knows, Commissioners, that we thought Michael was something, this is gonna be a different kind of Michael with COVID. With, there's, everybody's already knows it, there's no way that when you bring people back, they've not been exposed.
You know, just worried about, because this is three of them that's done built and it ain't even got started.
Yep. Prayers.
Yeah, that's what I just said, better pray.
Gotta pray.
Only that don't put as much silver than the moon.
God bless you.
All right, since we speaking of this, in the past, the chairman's been taking care for the hurricane, is it the same way, how we gonna do the same way we've been doing
In reference to...
Not for a state of emergency, can we let the chairman make all the decisions, we just retract what he's saying? For hurricanes.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing it with COVID-19, you're signing, you have the authority to sign the state of emergencies now, so I guess we'll follow the same route unless something happens.
Would we also have to meet to enact the state of emergency, or we're letting the chairman do it? That's what he's asking.
As of right now, the state of emergencies has been extended week to week to week based on his, I mean, you guys ratified a signature, but you gave him the authority to sign ahead of time, so, yeah, we're already into that, Commissioner, I believe.
And if you have...
What I'm asking is, is I got the same with hurricanes.
What is saying, coming up?
Yeah. Basically, what he's asking, do we default to the plan of, it's you and the chairman when we get into...
That's, that's what I've done in the past now. You have to understand that if we have a storm, that will be a separate local state of emergency. It has to be for that name storm, separate from COVID.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think the board is in agreement that we use the same process we used for years.
Okay, all right. What else you got?
That's all for me, unless y'all have something else for me.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it.
I hope you don't have to use that plan.
I hope so, too.
You and me both.
You know, because this, we gonna take them up to that mansion together. Y'all, y'all wanna break?
I don't think, Eric, you have any action items?
No, sir.
He can, if he has no action items, then he's the last of your department heads, Commissioner.
Okay, okay.
Morning Commissioners, Eric Lovestrun. Eric Lovestrun, County Extension Director. I don't have any action items, but happy to update you if you have questions about Extension Office operations, and you can give me a call anytime, reach out. I am occupying the office down here at the Mill Pond, so I'm there. If you need to set up an appointment, come and talk with me, it'll be fine.
Did they give you special orders?
Oh, yeah. University's got lots of things, basic following CDC guidelines, and I'm seeing people by appointment if they need to come and see somebody in person, otherwise, we're working with them via email and telephone to deal with questions and issues.
All the moon in?
We are.
Okay. Well, let us know when you open up, I thought like one day.
Give me a call, we can make that arrangement anytime now, I'm there, so.
I'm waiting.
I'll keep you sitting back at the back of the office. Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, too. All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next on the...
Now you can take your breaks.
Let's take a break.
God bless.
Dr. Patrick Conrad from Weems Memorial Hospital. I'm the Director of the Emergency Department here, and thank you for spending some time with us. Today, we are going to talk about the new coronavirus COVID-19 antibody testing. The testing that we have had thus far in this area has been antigen testing. Very quickly, let's talk about the difference. The test that a lot of you have had so far, which is the nasal swab, and it's taken a few days to get back. In most cases, we've had very few positive results, but that measures for an antigen. An antigen, think of it as just a small piece off the viral particle itself. So if you have an active infection, you are likely to have a positive antigen test. That is more of a snapshot test. That tells you whether or not you have a current infection. The difference is, an antibody test tells you whether or not you had previously an infection. That's actually more valuable in a lot of ways. It will tell us who has had the infection and never knew they had it, and that gives a lot more valuable data to public health officials and to the individual, him or herself, for reassurance. So Donna?
I'm Donna Tera Tooth, the Laboratory Department Manager here at Weems Memorial Hospital. I'm going to be talking a little bit specifically about the antibody test. What is an antibody? When a patient is in, or when a person is infected with the COVID-19 virus, the body, specific cells in the body will begin to produce proteins. Specifically, the protein is an immunoglobulin, and its purpose in life is to kill the virus or whatever infection that you have been infected with. The antibody that we will be testing is the IgG antibody. It is the one that in most infections confers immunity. It can attack the virus and induce a number of reactions that, first of all, cause the virus to die or to be destroyed. They don't actually die since they're not really living. And the other is to elicit an immune response, part of which is memory cell, so that if the virus particle comes into your body in some future date, these memory cells remember the virus and they start producing even more antibody and killing it even more effectively.
The antibody test is going to be a blood test. You're not going to get an uncomfortable swab up the nose. You are going to get a brief blood test. The sample will be sent off to a central lab, processed, and then we'll get the results, and we'll inform you. What the general public should want to know is that if you have a negative antibody test, it doesn't mean that you're for sure going to get it. If you have a positive antibody test, it means you did get it, and that should actually be reassuring. Now, one question that Donna alluded to, if I have a positive antibody test, can I get a COVID-19 infection again? The answer is, we don't know. You will probably have a good deal of immunity to further COVID-19s unless there are mutated strains, and there just has not been enough research yet for us to say. But overall, it's better news if you already have been infected and have a positive antibody test.
There is one caveat on having a positive antibody test. There are a total of seven coronaviruses that cause infection in humans. Four of them possibly may cross-react with the COVID-19 antibody test, so that if you are positive, it could be that you have had one of these other diseases that don't even have names, they're just given numbers, four of them. But more than likely, it's because of COVID-19, just because of the proximity of your testing, and that that is what is out in the public at this time.
Employers may have a question, if I have an employee with a positive antibody test, should I allow them to come back to work? And the answer is yes, absolutely. They are much less likely to get infected, and they are much less likely, therefore, to infect anyone else. These would be your safest employees to bring back. Again, so a positive antibody test should be reassuring to the individual and to anyone they're in contact with. Thank you again for spending some time with us. Please let us know here at Weems if you have any questions. If we haven't covered anything or made anything clear, we want to be as informative as possible for the community during this time, and we will continue to bring you regular updates. Thanks for watching.
...forward and ensure that we get our share of federal funding and representation, because Franklin County community needs you now more than ever. Now, I've been able to secure some lovely promotional census items for Franklin County, which is great. It's a great benefit in spreading census awareness. So if you have a food drive that you're involved in, if there's a particular outreach activity that you're going to be sharing information or services within the community, please let us know. We'd love to share our census promotional items. I'm going to give you contact information for our interim chair, Ms. Courtney Bankston, where you can either email her or contact her, so we can make sure that that's out in the community. So, a significant way to get involved in Franklin County right now is to join the Complete Count Committee and infuse it with your energies, your ideas, and your outreach. We're currently looking for a chair to permanently chair, possibly two co-chairs, and additional members of the community. We've said this from the very beginning, on behalf of the census, to get more people involved, because not just one person or a group of people, but entire communities need to know what's happening. So, the Complete Count Committee task involves things like encouraging Franklin County residents to respond to the 2020 census. You could be making phone calls, posting on your social media platform, sending out printed items. It could just be sharing your idea, your ideas, and it's very valuable. It's for a short amount of time. We have extended the Complete Count Committee until October, and so if you're interested in joining the Volunteer Committee of Leaders and Trusted Voices, please contact interim chair, Ms. Courtney Bankston, and her telephone number is 1-850-653-9783. You can also email her at F-C-C-E-N-S-U-S-2020@franklincountyflorida.com. That's F-C-Census2020@franklinflorida.com. I want to update you with some quick information, but first I want to let you know, you know, we have a little bit of time to get this right. The population count that we will have by the end of the year is going to determine the future of Franklin County for the next 10 years. So, let's take this opportunity to make account, to ensure that we're going to have that Title I funding we need for Franklin County Schools Free Lunch Program. If you weren't aware, Franklin County Schools is a 100% free lunch program district under Title I. We have needs here. So rather than look at the field operations that had to halt because of restrictions, guidelines, and state and federal mandates, we had to push a lot of our timelines and things we had planned. Instead of looking at that as something negative, let's look at that as an opportunity, that in fact, we have extended our response time, and that's a great thing. Gives us more time to get the word out and make sure people are participating to ensure we have 100% complete count. I want to talk about rental properties. We do not count properties, we count people. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about this response rate, because we're, and I'll give you some numbers. So, first, I want to let you know that we're resuming 2020 field operations in some areas of the country. We had to take a phased approach again because of restrictions. We had to follow those federal guidelines. Remember, we're a federal agency, so if, once everything halted, and let's face it, the world changed very quickly, it pushed a lot of those, a lot of those milestones and those deadlines we had completely out the door. So, we have resumed field operations since May. Some areas will carry on additional field operations. A quick example of this would be Franklin County. You have a huge number of P.O. boxes, so our Update Lead Field Operations has launched paper questionnaires at physical address or households that have P.O. boxes, meaning we don't send the questionnaire to the P.O. box, but we do send the questionnaire to the P.O. box holder's physical address. So I want to make sure that we're, you know, dispelling myths or misinformation out there. So it's not that we don't count people who have P.O. boxes, it's that through our, one of our field operations we did from October 12, from August till October 13th of last year, which is called Address Canvasing, we verified, okay, there's still a structure here, because every 10 years, the street line changes due to natural disasters, or people move, or there's new construction. So we verify physical addresses. So based on that and a couple of other pieces of information, working with local and state government, we're able to have a true blueprint of where households are. So, if you didn't get your census questionnaire sent to your P.O. box, you're not going to, you have received or should receive in the next week or two a paper questionnaire in your household. And I'm going to give you a number to call and an address, and a website you can go to and fill out your census as well. We're going to talk about that. So, Update Lead, the census drops off materials at your front door. You respond using your census ID, which is a special unique code that you have received, that you will receive on your questionnaire. So those of you who have received a invitation to respond online, have either received a letter or a postcard, that's what we're talking about, that unique code. You include everyone who's lived in your household as of April 1st, including children born on April 1st or after. And then you can also go to 2020, you can go to My2020Census and fill out your census questionnaire online. There's also an 800, there's, I'm going to give you two 800 numbers to call, one in English, one in Spanish. Please, let's be very clear about this 800 number. Because of staffing, some of the wait times can be long, and sometimes I've called and it took me three minutes to get in. So, yeah, sometimes you have to wait, and sometimes you don't. It's up to you to decide what time of the day to try to call and get through. Remember, we're all working on reduced staffing issues due to restrictions. So for English, if you'd like to respond to the census, you can dial 844-330-2020. For Spanish, it's 844-468-2020. I also want to quickly talk about response rates. I don't want us to beat ourselves too much about this, but I do want us to be aware that Franklin County, as of 5/31/2020, we were at a response rate of 29.3. Now, what is a response rate? I've shared this before, and I'm happy to share it again. It gives us a sort of estimate of the households that are responding. That's not the population count. The population count is what we're after. The response rates give us an idea and let, help us gauge where we need to focus outreach and census participation. So, that population count we're going for, that's the goal. Once again, you know this, for those of us who know this, there's about 10 people in the community who don't. So, the population count is going to determine your funding for, and this is just a snapshot, it's actually more funding than, it's 4 trillion over 10 years and 675 annually or more. There's actually more funding than that, but that's where we're, that's just the federal funding. So, and then of course, the representation. But that is based on the population count. How do we get to the population count? We count all the people that are listed in all those census questionnaires that we send out. So the response rate refers to the amount or the percentage of households that are responding. Thus, we're looking at 29.3%, just to give you some quick numbers, back in 2010, the last decennial census, that was a long time ago, 10 years ago, the total response rate for Franklin County was 67%. But what do we glean out of 67%? We have a population count, and that's essentially what we want. Now, they're related, but again, what are you going to, what are we going to base the funding on? It's going to be based on that population number, which we don't know that number. We're not going to know that number until the end of this year and possibly next year if things are extended. But for now, December 31st is when we have that information. So, this is a really great tool. You can go to, you can go to see of the live response rates and see how other counties are responding as well. You can go to 2020census.gov/EN/response-rates. You can just Google 2020 Live Response Rate. This is the first time we've been able to do this. Now, I don't want us to beat ourselves up, but we're working hard, my goodness, between the PSAs that have been created, the posters, the outreach. Franklin County is a hard-working community, and it's a community that cares about its people. And I'm so excited, this is a legacy Board of County Commissioners who understand the importance, and that's why they've appointed this really great arm of their county by way of this Complete Count Committee. So, we're working hard, there's more time to make things happen. I want to quickly talk about how the census has spent money in Franklin County by way of our national campaigns, PSAs and radio, TV, streaming service channels, social media posts, and of course, those promotional items that I talked about a minute ago. So that's the kind of funding that we've done. Because the census is constitutionally mandated, Article 1, Section 2 of the Constitution, it is understood that it's the local governments, the local states, that are to spend their funding. Now, to spend their own funding to get this, the word out. So, I want people to understand that although it is a constitutionally mandated civic action that we're asking people to do, we've done this in 1790, it's really up to the individual, it's up to the county, and it's up to the state to encourage that participation and spend their funding. Clearly, Franklin County cares about their residents. They have put, they've invested money, they've invested time and resources with selecting some of these really wonderful, all of these really wonderful community leaders. So you're getting involved, and then we have this missing piece, which is the participation from community members. We have seen that questionnaires have gone out, and maybe they're sitting on someone's counter, or credenza, or in the trash. Okay, so we have to reinvigorate the message, and we have that opportunity. I would suggest, because you do have so many rentals, that through the CCC and also just community getting involved, understanding that if you have a homeowner's association, this is the time to send out reminders. We have information that's plug and play, ready to go, to let people know, if you own this property and you're spending a certain amount of time in the county, and it's more time spent in Franklin County than in your first or second home, please be counted in Franklin County, we need to count you here. Well, we count people. We don't count empty properties. I want to be very clear about that. We don't count empty rental properties, we count people. We count the people who need to be evacuated when FEMA, when it's time to call FEMA, goodness forbid, during a hurricane. We, you know, we need to count the people so we know the exact number of programs that we need for things like Title I funding that I talked about. So, I just want to make sure that people understand that we have a little bit of time to get this straight, we're on the right track, but we need to keep moving forward, and we need more people to get involved. And I will continue to support any way that I can, and I just thank you for being so incredibly involved and understanding that despite the fact, and I'll wrap this up, that we, there's a lot of things we can't control, my goodness, it seems every day the world is changing and becoming even more challenging, and how every single aspect of our lives from day to day, and now during this hurricane season, it becomes, you know, that much more challenging, the historical things we have to deal with as far as just the weather alone and what that means for, how we have to plan, you know, for the summers and the hurricane season. But this is one thing that we can do. We can take that opportunity to get to know the census a little bit better. You can go to 2020census.gov, or how about just read some of the, some of the wonderful materials that are out there that have been created by Franklin County, or have a conversation with each other, or contact us to see the Franklin County Council CCC, get to know why this is important. And then, if that's a little too much, then just do this, just fill out your census questionnaire and know that you did your part to take care of Franklin County. And we're not open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Evelyn, and I want to let you know and remind you, because I know you're watching the livestream last, last meeting, that, you know, we are about ready to, the board approved a full-page ad, and Courtney's getting input from you, she talked to Pat Buena. So basically, we should have our ad ready to submit this week, and it should be coming up in the paper. We just wanted to make sure everybody had input on the ad before we put that one full-page ad in the newspaper, okay?
Absolutely, I think that's great, and I'll just, I'll just close and say, thank you so much again. I'm always available to answer any questions. I want to once again thank this Board of County Commissioners, that is, again, a legacy partner that continues to lend support, reach out to their communities, and one thing that I'd love to ask as a favor, as a call to action, is that every time you have one of these lovely Board of County Commissioner meetings, that you just remind people about the census. I know you have your census alerts that are great. If you filled out your census, you can ignore the census alert. If you haven't, and it comes on your cell phone, that's a great time for you to go, take a few minutes and fill this out. And then, of course, for the Commissioners who have been so gracious to continue to share that census participation, we need the funding, we need the representation, and we just need to take 10 minutes to make sure we're going to be taken care of in Franklin County. Thank you so much. Y'all have a great day.
Don't hang up yet, just in case they have any questions for you, okay?
Of course, of course.
Has the census deadline been extended relative to the virus and other issues?
Yes, Commissioner, it has. In fact, we have extended the deadline. We want to encourage everyone to fill it out now, but we have extended that, that time, that response time. So yes, concurrent to these changes, we have an extension until the end of the summer, which is why the Complete Count Committee has also extended their, their existence, if you will, to continue sharing and encouraging people to please fill out their census.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got to move on.
That's it?
Yep.
All right, Evelyn, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a great day, we'll talk soon.
Okay, thank you so much, bye.
Bye. Commissioners, if you would, Mr. Chairman, would you allow Angela Webster from Community Action to go next, and then I'll come back to Deborah, because I got to call Deborah too, okay?
Come on up, Ms. Ms. Webster. Ms. Angela?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am reporting for ESF 15.
Let me get your name.
Oh, Angela Webster, sorry, Capital Area Community Action Agency. So this is my ESF 15 report for the East Point Lime Rock Fire Survivors. The agency continues to work with a total of 10 cases, two of which the board has approved use of fire relief funds. These two cases include 582B Ridge Road was board-approved for the use of $7,300, of which only 55 was required to get the mobile home set up for the job completion. And then there was 579 Ridge Road, the board approved the use of $4,063.64. This job has not been completed, because when the, I'll just read from my paper, "The survivors mentioned someone was being shot when touching the roof. I reached out to Mr. Steve Patterson, the building inspector, to have him assess the home. After his inspection, he advised me to call an electrician. Reached out to Mike Cates, a local electrician, he informed me the roof was electrified. Mr. Cates also informed me that his company was not willing to accept the liability associated with the job. So, I followed up with the survivors to inform them that although the county has approved the repairs, our agency could not schedule the repairs until the wiring issue was addressed. I directed the survivors to contact Duke Energy first, as well as an electrician, to address and correct the wiring issue. At this time, it is unknown as to whether or not the wiring issue is a result of the fire. However, I did inform the survivors, if there is proof the issue is a result of the fire, we are willing to assess with the cost. I continue to follow up with the survivors, but an electrician still has not reassessed the electrical issue. According to the survivors, the electrical issue has been resolved by the husband, but it hasn't, it's been challenging to acquire an electrician willing to reassess the roof and confirm issue resolved." And I've reached back out to Mr. Cates and other electricians for that, and no one wants to reassess because it's not their work, and by signing off on it and saying that the roof is no longer electrified, then they're signing off on that job, that work at that home, and they don't want to do it.
Is that a new house?
No, it's an old house. It's one of our fire survivors who, I think their children lived in a home behind it. The children's home burned down, and the side of, their vinyl siding was damaged. So I don't, it's not a new one, I don't think. I think it's a home that had additions added on to it, and I think that plays a part in why none of the electricians want to sign off on it, because they didn't do the work for the extension. Okay, moving on, I have a remaining eight cases, which are listed there, but I'll go into detail. Three of the above-name cases, which would be in this little block here, are requesting transfer of title on camper trailers as replacements for their loss of residence. I have received notarized statements in addition to signatures to confirm receipt of the Franklin County Ordinance Number 82-6 in reference to occupancy and use of camper trailers. The agency does not wish to provide a housing solution that may potentially cause an issue for the county. Should the board be satisfied with the precautions taken, I would like to request board action on the transfer of title for camper trailers as replacement for loss of residence for 607 Wilderness, 605B Wilderness, and 599B Wilderness. All camper trailers have been appraised for a total of $23,500. The cost to transfer tags and titles approximately $450.
Pleasure, the board.
So look, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Is he going to sign these over to them?
Yes.
And you, are you going to have something that they can't sell them?
For the campers?
Yeah.
I can, if that's what you would like me to do. Now, what I've done, because we've done this before for one of our Lime Rock Fire Survivors already, we didn't have her to sign anything, but I can for these three, if you would like me to. I just wanted to make sure I had them to sign something stating that if they're not, that they understand what the ordinance is, so that we don't have them going and parking their camper. so that we don't have them going and parking their camper somewhere that's illegal, without having said that they already know. So I have notarized letters from them, as well as the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, we allowed campers in that particular area for a certain period of time.
Right.
Is that time expired?
I think it's coming up.
My question is, if we transfer title to these campers, they'd rather keep the camper than, than have a replacement mobile home. They cannot leave them in this particular area, because it was only for a certain period of time that you could have a camper on a lot. Because we don't allow lots to have campers to live in. We don't give people power if they park a camper on an acre of land. So what is the issue with that? If we transfer, the one that we did transfer actually moved her camper to a mobile home park.
Exactly.
RV park.
Yes, sir.
Is that what these people are gonna do?
Yes, and that's why I made sure to have them to sign a copy of that ordinance, and as, write a statement that was notarized, so that they are aware that they cannot, if it's not in a trailer park, then they know they can't have it.
Okay, yeah. That was, that was the agency, that's their agency's concern. They didn't want to encourage something that encouraged them to violate the county's ordinance. That's exactly right.
I'm fine with it, as long as they gonna move them to a RV park or something.
You were right, exactly what they talked about, Commissioner.
I just want to ask the board how they feel about not, you know, them selling them.
Right.
If they want to sell, Mr. Chairman, my opinion is, if they want to sell their home, let them sell them. I mean, but don't come back to this board and look for another permanent home. These are in lieu
Yeah.
of their permanent home. So when they, when they transfer these titles to these campers, these people, they cannot be parked there. They got to go to an RV park. And if they want to sell the home, let them sell it. I mean, I don't care, but don't come back for more.
Right.
This is their one-shot, Commissioners. This is their one-shot.
What they're asking for.
At getting help. Instead of a CDB trailer or whatever else they could have, this is, this is what they're asking for.
Okay.
You know, and if they sell it, that'll be to their detriment, to be very honest with you.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's their detriment. That's my opinion.
So, will the board please approve use of fire relief funds in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to pay for the cost to transfer title as replacement for loss of residence on camper trailers, to include the value of the camper trailers, as well as the cost to transfer the tag and title?
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
On both, I pass unanimous.
Okay. We have a Lime Rock Fire survivor previously living at six sixty-seven Ridge Road, who has requested half the cost of seventy-six thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-two cents. This quote was received on March thirty-first from Ironwood Homes. This would be required to finance a new mobile home. Due to the fact that the survivor received an insurance reimbursement on loss of residence, we offered him, rather than paying the half of the seventy-six, we offered him twenty thousand to assist with the cost of his new home. The survivor first declined the offer, but has since returned to accept. Will the board please approve use of the fire relief funds in the amount of twenty thousand to assist survivor at six sixty-seven Ridge Road with the cost to finance a new mobile home?
Same here. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters.
Same here.
Second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, I pass unanimous.
Okay. We continue to provide temporary housing for a total of four Lime Rock Fire survivors. Of the four survivors, two are CDBG eligible, to include five ninety-five Ridge Road. The property, okay, let's see, four people, Lime Rock Fire survivors. Five ninety-five Ridge Road is not one that is CDBG eligible. The property owner has restricted the agency from pursuing any efforts to replace the loss of residence here. He has stated that they have secured legal representation and do not wish to receive services from Community Action. But we do recommend extending the camper lease for six months until this family that is currently there can find permanent housing.
Pleasure to vote. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters.
Same here.
Do you have a question, Mr. Moreau?
I, I, I was just curious, but as to why they went as far to get legal representation, vehicle representation and not want the services, but that's, that's for another time.
I can answer it if you would like. Make it quick. You want me to answer and make it quick? I won't call names.
Okay.
Okay. The property was actually owned by a family member, and the person that was living there at the time of the fire had not received the deed, although he says that he's made all the payments to him. So it's the actual property owner, not the person who lost their home, who is saying that we can't put anything else on his property.
Makes sense.
So that's a family issue, and we've stepped back from that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seven oh one Ridge Road.
They got a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, I pass unanimous. Go ahead.
Okay. Seven oh one Ridge Road, we would like to thank the Carabao Episcopal Church of Ascension, the First Baptist Church of East Point, and the Law Office of Steve Watkins, in partnership with Community Action's Family Self-Sufficiency Program, for helping bring this family current in their property taxes, as well as their land payments, in an effort to secure permanent housing. This family now meets the requirements to pursue the CDBG home replacement, and has been referred to Ms. Deborah Belcher.
Same here.
Yes, we are so grateful.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner.
No, there's not a vote required.
Yeah, I don't think she's asking for action on that one. She want to let you guys know how they're able to get them help.
Yes, that's how we're gonna get them help, because this was a family that was stuck in a position that we didn't think we would be able to. But thankfully, those different organizations were able to come forth with donated funds to help bring them current, and now they are eligible to receive the CDBG home.
Okay. Good.
Okay, and just an update on seven fourteen Brook Street. The board approved application for the CDBG home replacement contingent upon securing land, and the family was adopted by Pastor Ronnie McBride and Renew, who is currently in the process of securing land on behalf of this family. So she's currently still in a camper as well. Our fourth family that's in the camper, they originally requested transfer of title on a camper trailer as replacement for loss of residence. However, the family owns their land, which is not zoned for campers. And after consulting with Ms. Deborah Belcher, the CDBG grant manager, it was decided that we would provide the family with the share of home to be donated by another survivor that would be receiving a CDBG home replacement. This will avoid the potential for violation of county ordinance and reduce the cost to secure the permanent housing for this family. Moving forward, per your request, I have provided the balance on the account of donated funds to include all approved and pending transactions to this date. As of April twenty twenty, we have a total of sixty-seven thousand three hundred and five dollars and ninety-nine cent, with the fifty-five hundred dollar job that was just completed for five eighty-two B Ridge Road. That will come out of it. And then, once they take care of their electrical, it's pending their electrical issue, the five ninety-seven, I mean, I'm sorry, five seventy-nine Ridge Road, four thousand dollars sixty-three, four thousand sixty-three dollars, sixty-four cent. Sorry, I'm getting tongue-tied here. Okay? And then the six sixty-seven Ridge Road for the twenty thousand that you guys just approved, and then five ninety-nine B for the forty-six fifty, six oh five B for eight thousand one hundred and fifty, and then the six oh seven for eleven thousand one hundred and fifty. And that will bring our balance to thirteen thousand seven ninety-two thirty-five cent. Please note, there is an additional ten thousand to be added once the balance near zero, which will bring us to a total of actually twenty-three thousand seven ninety-two remaining. Should you guys, I mean, I'm sorry, should the board approve all action items, which you have?
Pleasure to vote.
I think that was an update.
That's just an update.
That's an update.
No vote required. I just wanted to make sure you had all the information as to where we are, what type of monies we have, what you guys have, the board has approved in the past, and what was pending.
Is y'all back open yet?
We are open, but not to the public. We're taking applications online, and if anyone calls our agency to request an appointment, I'm kind of working and letting them drop, drop, required documents off. Our property manager put us a drop box out front, and so they dropped their documents off. And I kind of let them in, depending, you know. I tried to open up, and then I had a group of people coming in, and they was just sick and sneezing and coughing everywhere, so it made me feel a little uncomfortable, so.
I don't blame.
Yeah, so, you know, but I am working with them. I've been processing the utility assistance for people to make sure we get some of our people who don't have access to computers. Yeah.
All right.
Does the board have any questions for me?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, are y'all gonna continue with helping us during this hurricane season with the ESF fifteen?
I believe my CEO intends to. I don't think he has any plan to move out of that position if the board wants us to continue to do so.
Just want to be sure we got somebody in that spot.
Yes, sir.
Y'all done a good job, so I want to see you stay.
Thank you.
Very good job. Thank you so much.
All right.
Keep up the good work. Doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, hang around a second, because I got Deborah on the line, just in case something comes up. I have Ms. Deborah Belcher on the line, Commissioner.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Deborah Bell.
Go ahead, Deborah.
Okay, so, good morning. And I, I think you had my report. I had two action items. One is to replace the, I mean, to, excuse me, let me mute this thing, because I'm, I've got two things going at once. Got the board meeting and the call. Okay, so the, one of the, the projects that Angela talked about was the one where the people were behind on payments, and that was due to a bunch of health problems they'd had. So that is actually Jim Joyner and Anita Kennett, with whom I'm identifying here, because I'm requesting approval of their application for CDBG home replacement. And I would like to have them included in our next bid package.
That, that's the seven oh one Ridge Road. That's the one that Angela just referred to.
Correct, correct.
So the action item is down to the middle of her report, where she's approved the application for a CDBG home replacement for Jim Joyner and Anita Kennett, subject to property purchase and environmental clearance.
And that, and the purchase did go through, by the way. It went, it happened last Friday.
Good, great.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, I pass unanimous.
All right, Deborah, you can move on now to Stephen Shiver, seven hundred Ridge Road.
Yes, his application is okay, so I'd like to request approval for a CDBG home replacement for Steve Shiver, and that's at seven hundred Ridge Road.
Same here.
Same here.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, I pass unanimous.
All right. All right, Deborah, you have anything else for the board, or that's it?
No, I, we're, I'm finalizing the bid package now, the next bid package, which will include these. And we'll be moving along. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Deborah.
That's the cream, Elizabeth.
Yes, the creamers inside, yes, sir. The creamers are part of that bid package.
Yes, yes.
You hear that, Ben?
As well as Lucy Beddinger, and she's the one that has the donated home that's gonna go to the Page family, who will be putting it on Old Ferry Dock Road.
Okay. Hold on one second.
Question before she goes.
Go ahead.
Is she gonna be our next meeting, or is that gonna be July before she has that back to us?
The bid.
The bid package she's putting together.
The bid package you're putting together.
It'll be July, because again, we have to allow response time.
It's all good.
Okay.
July?
Yeah, probably the first meeting in July, hopefully, Commissioner. All right.
All right.
All right, Deborah, thank you so. Anyone have a question?
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, it's a pleasure. Thank you.
Talk to you soon. Bye. Okay, that's taken care of.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Marcy Jones.
I, I'm gonna let Erin do a report about the budget situation, but I just wanted to, since Ms. Ramirez mentioned that one hundred percent of my employees completed the census. And Erin and them, as part of payroll, sent a little pamphlet out, all the county employees asking them to also complete the census this last time.
Thank you.
Thank you. You heard that, Pat and, and Erin? I mean Evelyn?
And then that, that pamphlet went in their payroll?
It did. Yep, in their payroll checks.
Going forward, did you think maybe a reminder of the census would go printed on their check stub until the census?
Yes, we can also add that message as well, you know, actually on the, on the actual stuff.
Will you continue to do that until the census times out?
Yes, we can.
Okay, let's do that.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Got to get that money.
That's right.
And in regards to the two questions that were asked earlier on the bid, on the bill list, the check for six thousand four oh two thirty-eight for the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, and the check for twelve thousand one seventy-eight forty for the Woculla County Board of County Commissioners, were both annual budget allocations relative to the circuit judge. Both allocations are for Frank, the Franklin County Sheriff employees, such as a court martial, a juvenile alternative sanction coordinator, and a network user support analyst, who are shared by the six counties that make up the circuit. And then I also wanted to pride you all with a revenue update. With the travel restrictions, social distancing, and the temporary closure of many nonessential businesses by the state of Florida in the hopes of slowing the spread of COVID nineteen, the months of March, April, and May will have heavy losses in sales tax revenue. Franklin County has just received a distribution of sales tax from the Florida Department of Revenue for the month of March sales. The local tourist development tax, which is a two percent sales tax levied on transient rentals within the county, had sales tax proceeds of seventy-one thousand nine forty-six eighty-four for the month of March twenty twenty, and March of twenty nineteen had sales tax proceeds of one hundred twenty-seven thousand nine seventy-five twenty. The March proceeds for transient rentals came in at just fifty-six percent of the prior year period. This amount is understandable, as almost half of the month of March was lost due to the travel ban and the state's suspension of vacation rentals. Franklin County also levies a one percent discretionary sales surtax on all taxable sales in Franklin County, which is used to fund the Healthcare Trust Fund. The one percent sales tax proceeds for the month of March twenty twenty were one hundred forty-two thousand seven fifteen sixty-one, and March of twenty nineteen had sales tax proceeds of two hundred and three thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and eleven cents. The March proceeds for all taxable sales within the county, not just transient rentals, came in at seventy percent of the amount collected for the prior year period. The state of Florida also distributes some state shared revenues, which are based on taxable sales. The state shared revenues fund about twelve percent of the county's general fund. The combined state shared revenues for the March proceeds distribution was approximately seventy-three percent of the prior year period. The state of Florida Department of Revenue recently released a conservative estimate that the decline in sales tax proceeds for the months of April and May will be about fifty percent. The phased reopening of the economy and the relaxation of the travel ban should equate to much better numbers for the summer months. The effective loss of twenty-seven percent of the state shared revenues for the month of March, and if the fifty percent reductions hold true, per the estimates from the Florida Department of Revenue, the annualized loss would be about ten point five nine percent of the state shared revenues for the county general fund, or one hundred thirty thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars. The loss of the state shared revenues for the county road department would be about one hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars. The loss of the state shared revenues for the, for the Healthcare Trust Fund would be about two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, and the reduction in TDC sales taxes would be two hundred forty-two thousand three nineteen. At this time, it is uncertain if the coronavirus pandemic will have a lasting effect on sales tax proceeds for the state of Florida. The county budget year begins in October and ends in September. Sales tax proceeds may not be as heavily impacted next fiscal year. With the passage of the CARES Act, funding was not specifically allocated for counties with a population of less than five hundred thousand, but it is my understanding that there have been some discussions in Tallahassee to include some of the smaller counties in the relief efforts to make up for lost sales tax revenues. And Michael Moreau will actually be mentioning that on his report later on. But I just wanted to pride you all with a narrative of what we're looking at.
Thank you.
So, so of the three entities that have seen a reduction so far, one's the TDC, and so they need to beware of their expenditures and, and, you know, act accordingly. The second is the hospital. They did receive three million of CARE, so they have some cushion coming from the federal government to help them. But the third one's the road department.
Road Department and the general fund. So those two, those two are pretty much, you know, operating for the counties, so.
So does the road department need to hold stable on the building? What are you gonna do with the building?
Well, with the building, we're gonna go ahead and review the bids, and then they've also had some FEMA funds come in. So if, if need be, we can actually roll some of the FEMA funds into actually count.
So you're still reviewing the building situation?
Yes.
Well, Commissioner, let me, let me see here. So let's, let's just go ahead, if you guys don't mind. Mr. Pierce, let me go straight to my, okay. So on page six, item twenty-three of my, my report. Talk, talk about this, kind of wrap this discussion up. County staff was contacted by the Florida Association of Counties of a joint request by FAC, the Florida League of Cities, and Small County Coalition to Governor DeSantis to Governor DeSantis to release the intended local government coronavirus relief funds to those cities and counties that were not directly funded by the CARES Act. The CARES Act provided direct funding totaling more than two point four billion to twelve Florida counties whose population is greater than five hundred thousand. Currently, Florida has fifty-five counties and approximately four hundred and ten cities with a respective population that is less than the five hundred thousand threshold stipulated by the CARES Act that was not funded. After the eligible Florida local governments received their share, there is approximately one point two billion remaining that was allocated for local governments. It is those funds that F A C, F L C, and, and, uh, Small County Coalition, S C C, is asking the governor to distribute to the counties and cities with a population of less than five hundred thousand. Included in your packet is a letter from the county, signed by the chairman, supporting the efforts of F A C, F L C, and S C C, along with letters from those organizations. So, uh, first, I, I, well, eventually I need a board to ratify the chairman's signature because we sent that letter in already. So, basically, if the, the governor goes with this formula that, um, F A C is, is, is basically providing to cover all the counties that did not receive any funding as yet, we would get approximately seven hundred and thirty-seven, let's say a hundred and thirty-eight, seven hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's what we would get from this CARES Act. Now, what we also have to be careful with is what strings are attached and what clawback we would have to deal with if this money is not, if we receive the money, and if it's not spent in the manner that the CARES Act determines it's supposed to be spent and/or the governor, if he puts any more strings with this funding. But that's what we're looking at, gentlemen.
They got a lot of restrictions on that money.
Yes.
There probably will be. Some. I won't say a lot, but some restrictions. That's what we have to be careful with.
What's our action item now? We see some reality numbers, first we've heard since this pandemic. Do we, what do we do right now about this shortfall of money we're seeing?
You have to address?
Yep, and-
During the budget workshop, don't know.
Yes, but isn't that, isn't the budget workshop too late? Is there anything we need to be doing right now? That's just a question.
Actually, with the budget workshops, they're gonna be in July, so we will actually have a, a more complete picture, and we'll also have the revenue estimates as, um, distributed by the Florida Department of Revenue at that point in time, so we'll kind of know, we'll better know in July, you know, what to expect for next.
Just be patient then.
And, and I think to add to that, I think, gentlemen, to add it, to add to it in July, I think we'll know if the government's gonna go along with this plan or not to distribute this money. Uh, there, it's, it's, I don't want to use the word pressure, but it's a constant discussion between F A C and the governor's office about this, and it's constant lobbying, you know, to get this money to these counties, because they also need it, you know, before their budget workshops, sir, so, yeah.
And I would caution against, you know, spending for any, any items that aren't already, you know, included in your county budget, because it's like-
That's our current caution.
Yes.
Just like Commissioner Parrish stated, you know, we are going into hurricane season, and we also, um, we just don't know what to expect yet.
Sure.
And Marsha, your budget, you, you expressed concerns last month about it, and everything is under control right now, at this moment?
Well, I have concerns.
Yeah.
We had meetings last week where we were told our, the clerks are gonna be using the trust fund to get by this year, but there's still potential cuts. I've been told that my budget could potentially be down to forty-eight thousand, which is a lot.
It's a seller.
That's a first. So, we're just watching it, and we're gonna be seeing how the revenues come in. I'll have a better idea probably in July as well.
I might come motion to ratify the chairman's signature.
Sir?
Yes.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
On the floor.
I wish we could all go and sign that letter, too.
It did. Okay.
Okay, all right.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Alan Pearce. Restore accordingly.
Yes, so my items are just for information, but I'm gonna put them right in the record just because it may be some discussion about. Uh, first one, item number thirteen on page five. Inform the board the FAA has contacted county to process, and we are processing thirty thousand, or it's processed, thirty thousand dollar grant for the airport. That's part of the federal CARES Act, so the airport can receive a little revenue. Uh, and it's for operating purposes. Inform the board that the consortium staff will recommend the June tenth consortium meeting, approval of the county's dredging projects. Once the consortium board approves, the consortium staff will then send the county projects to Gulf Council for final approval, which should happen in July and August. I've been in contact with Dan Duarte. There's nothing more for the county to do. Commissioner Parrish, I presume you'll be, it's a conference call meeting. I presume you'll be on it. Uh, it's a recommendation coming from staff. There's nothing for the county to do. Once the board approves it, then, uh, consortium staff sends it to the Gulf Council, so we're just sort of in a, a monitoring mode until we get some information back. Fifteen, inform the board the U S Army Corps of Engineers continues to work on the memorandum of agreement, M O A, to incorporate the county's consortium funds into the dredging project. I have in contact with Mobile and Panama City personnel. The Corps still intends to use a dredge that is under, currently under contract with the Corps. The M O A should come down from the Corps to the county in July, August. The projects are still in the same timeline. For the East Point Channel, it'll be dredged in early fall, followed by the Two Mile Channel. And I'm really thinking that by the time we get the consortium money, the M O A will be signed, and so we won't need any short-term financing. I'm, uh, that's, that's, that's the plan I'm working on right now. Number sixteen, inform the board that I have in contact with Triumph Staff regarding the million-dollar Triumph Award for our airport. Triumph Staff is working on the term sheet, which would list the requirements the county must perform in order to receive the funds. The term sheet will not contain any job creation requirements, which has been a major problem for rural counties getting Triumph funds, but it will include some language regarding that improvements F D O T has funded in their five-year plan for the airport. The board will need to review, review and approve the term sheet when the Triumph Staff submits it. The next Triumph meeting is June eighteenth, and I'm not sure we'll be on that agenda because we haven't seen the term sheet yet. Hopefully, it won't be too big of a deal, but we still have to see it, obviously. Number seventeen, inform the board that I intend to ask the board to waive the May, May rent for Centric Aviation because Centric had virtually no flight traffic in March, April, and the first part of May, yet they continue to maintain the airport using their personnel. I informed Centric what my regulations are going to be, and they said that air traffic had picked back up, and they were making their May rent as indication of their commitment to the airport. So, I appreciate that Triumph, uh, that Centric is continuing to carry their share of the airport responsibilities. Number eighteen, inform the board that on Thursday, May twenty-eighth, I did review the draft supplemental environmental assessment, S E A, from FEMA for rebuilding the Alligator Drive. The draft S E A recommends the road be rebuilt in its current location with the additional protection that the county has already designed and bid out. The draft S E A has some additional FEMA review, and then it will be released with public comment. Commissioner Bolt attended last week's teleconference with me and the FEMA staff, and Commissioner, you're welcome to do it again at two o'clock at the E O C, we're having another one today. And here's the same thing I did, which is when the draft is, S E A is complete, and when public comments, uh, and when the public, uh, what am I trying to say? And when, and made public, there are still some other steps FEMA has to take before funding is obligated. And I will say that I just got an email this morning, the public comment period on the S E A, Commissioner Bolt and the general public is, should be July seventh. So, by July seventh, we should start advertising. It's a thirty-day window for public comment. I really don't expect any public comment, and nor do I encourage a lot of public comment, I'll be honest with you, because we've already got the plan, we've already bid it out. We need to roll this thing forward, and let's move. Uh, but anyway, it's a thirty-day window that can't be shortened, uh, to my knowledge, so hopefully in August, we will then get this part of it out of the way, and maybe eventually we will be able to get funds out of FEMA. I'm sure just in time for another hurricane.
Sure.
And that's the end of my report. Oh, 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 no, listen, I have one big item.
All right.
One big item. Uh-oh.
Good news?
Uh, you know, depends on how you look at it. This is something that, that, actually, Commissioners, it's already in the news, but it hasn't been in our local thing, so I thought I would, uh, bring it up here locally. So, this is a, this is a map of the county. This is a map of the county that's been, uh, sort of in existence. You can just rest right there. Uh, it's been existed for a while. You, that, like, this is an old D O T map. The outline in red, I'm sorry, the county, uh, is outlined by the, you know, borders, but the section in red is state-owned land. It's been acquired over the number of years. The section in blue is federal land. Most of the federal lands have been in existence for a while, but the state began acquiring parcels, management farms, and ultimately takes sale state forests, Ballpoint State Park. It's sort of, sort of been this way for about, I don't know, ten or fifteen years, and that currently, that red and that blue together represents about eighty-five percent of the county land mass. So, eighty-five percent of the county land mass is not paying any taxes. Now, for a while, they, we got a payment lieu of taxes, uh, for what state purchased, and we do get, uh, periodically, we get timber sales. So, this has been the boundary of the county, and it is affecting the future development. Uh, you know, we, we have limited opportunities now. If we ever want to try and move, develop inland, as you can see with all this red, you're never gonna move inland. So, we had a few places that were left, some west of Apalachicola, which really isn't that much inland, but the St. George Sound is a little more protected, and then over here on the east end. Uh, the east end particularly was the track, for those of you who've been here long enough to remember, the St. Joe Company had this master plan for lots of development on the east end of the county, and most of it was centered in this area here. Uh, and we went through a long process, of which the county ultimately approved, then disapproved some of the land use down there, but some of it was fairly intense. The most significant one was something called Marina Village, which is gonna be some two thousand units down there on a bluff over the Lochne Bay, uh, and St. Joe was gonna pay for all the infrastructure if it ever went forward, including sewer and water and all kind of amenities there. But there were some other ones, uh, that was Marina Village. It was something called Bear, Bear Bluffs, I believe. That was a less, less intense, but anyway, there was some aspect for future development, future growth over a long period of time down there. The state of Florida, the governor cabinet last week, I believe it was, or two weeks ago, authorized the purchase of this property. It's seventeen thousand acres of land. It's twenty-five square miles. It's labeled, and why it didn't catch my eye, and we weren't notified directly, it's labeled as a Dickerson, Dickerson Bay addition. Well, Dickerson Bay is in Waukaha County. So, it was sort of, to me, a little misleading when they talked about the Dickerson Bay acquisition, but in fact, most of that land is in Franklin County. And so, if you add the Dickerson Bay addition, this is now what the county looks like. And so, it takes a big chunk of, uh, of land off the tax roll, well, seventy thousand acres. The state of Florida, my conversation with them yesterday, did tell me that, one, you know, the sale's going through, and the state will hope to reimburse the county for payment lieu of taxes and for forest sales. Well, first of all, I'm not sure when forest sales occur because of Hurricane Michael, and payment lieu of taxes depend upon the state of Florida funding that episode, that, that funding thing. So, it's not a guarantee. The state says they're buying this to, uh, for environmental purposes, obviously, but also they hope to enhance the recreational opportunities in the Ballpoint State Park system, and therefore increase tourism in the county. Well, and that's good, and that's also contingent upon the state of Florida funding improvements to Ballpoint State Park. Ballpoint State Park would basically run from where it is now over to, uh, U S ninety-eight. The rest of the land would be managed by either Takesale State Forest, I'm sorry, Takesale, you know, State Forest, or maybe something company that Lochne, uh, across the bridge there, Lochne State Park there. The management's not quite worked out. But this is a big, it's a, it's a change in the county. You know, we have to be realistic now. The county is sixty miles long by basically a mile wide. That's the area that we're gonna be responsible for providing services, and it's a very odd distribution. If you're looking from a planning standpoint, it's a nightmare. You know, what you want are squares. You want development, you know, radiating out where you can find services and infrastructure, roads, sewer, all in a good grid pattern. Everything's interconnected, and we don't have that. We never will have it. It's gonna, it's a linear now. That's what we've got. And so, it's just gonna make a change. It's always been a challenge, and this just confirms it's gonna continue to be a challenge. There will be a comment period generated by the state of Florida once they acquire the property, and so we don't have to take any action now because there will be an official comment period. But in my, in my, this, and, and F D O, sorry, F D P initiated this phone call to me a couple of weeks ago, or actually last week, to conclude, you know, some of their comments about this. And the things I told them was, you know, I was worried about the sales, the, uh, payment lieu of taxes, because that's gotta be funded by the legislature. I was not sure about forest sales. I said, "Look, immediately, though, you all need to solve a problem that you've created, which is the access to Alligator Harbor and the aquatic preserve there." I said, "You are now buying all the rest of the land that might be used for an access point. You need to buy that access point. You got fifty leases down there that are jamming up a county road that wasn't intended for that thing. You need to solve that problem." So, that, I put that on their list. I talked about the loss of potential value for development. I talked about the loss of the ability for a county to get more, uh, as an example, landfill, not that we use a landfill down there, but when the state buys it, you know, then we can't negotiate that price. So, I, I warned them that we have future needs coming up, because once the state buys the land, it's public, and for my planning purposes, and you all might have considered, it's perpetuity. That land is no longer available ever, ever, ever again for anything. And so, you know, it does change the way the county is going to, um, have, have, have opportunities in the future. The, the state of Florida brought up the affordable housing issue, and I said, "Yes, it's a problem." I said, "The purchased land doesn't necessarily immediately impact that, but to some extent it does, because that land could have been developed. Some of it's off the water, some of it might have been, uh, less valuable property." I mean, St. Joe wasn't planning to do much in affordable housing, but you never know where the market would, will lead. But they are concerned about that, and I suspect that they will come back to the county at some point with some ideas about how they can help solve some of these problems. But again, there'll be an official public comment period, uh, as soon as they acquire the property. But I just want to pass this on that the acquisition's going forward, this, the governor cabinet approved the purchase, and the only thing holding it is a few surveys.
Ms. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I make a comment. When you're talking about payment lieu of taxes, that don't come to the county nowhere.
I tried to go to school board.
Even if the state come up with the money to pay payment lieu of taxes, it don't come to the county. So, that's off the tax rolls, and we get nothing for it. And my comments-
How much money is off the tax?
On this issue was, again, like Alan said, if you, if you're looking for us to, to, if you're looking to do something advantageous to us, is to put a boat ramp with, with efficient parking, sufficient parking on ninety-eight, so these leaseholders, uh, can access the Oyster leases and not impact so much of Alligator Point Road, and there's nowhere to build a, a big lot, a big, uh, boat ramp, or have sufficient parking for these people on Ball, on Ball, uh, on Alligator Point Road. So, those were some suggestions that I agree with Alan, that they need to help us research and, and take some action on that.
One of the selling points, and I'm gonna interrupt, just saying, one of the selling points that they mentioned in the, in the teleconference was, "Look, you know, Alan, this is gonna help Franklin County because, you know, we helped to develop Ballpoint State Park, and our, and our estimates are a hundred and fifty thousand visitors a year will be going to Ballpoint State Park." I said, "Guys, look, you're gonna have to do a lot of improvements. It means a lot of state funds are gonna be put into Ballpoint State Park to draw that kind of traffic." St. George Island does have to draw that kind of traffic. St. George Island has between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand visitors a year. But guess what? St. George Island, one, it's a known, it's a known beach destination for all of the area, including Tallahassee, and you have two thousand rental houses on St. George Island that if people wanna go to a different beach, they can go to the state park. There is no such market, uh, in, in Alligator, in the east end of the county. When Waukaha County doesn't have a lot of rental units, Alligator Point has about two hundred, not two thousand. So, there isn't, there isn't the capacity for people to visit Ballpoint, even if there was the millions of dollars of investments made in Ballpoint. Now, there's a beach environment there, and I've asked the E P, I mean, I told them in the conference call, uh, and I had Mark in the room with me, just so, uh, you could hear some of this stuff also, was that, "Look, guys, you know, Ballpoint State Park is a semi-beach environment. It's got an eroding shoreline. It's not as clear of water as, you know, St. George Island, and, you know, your estimates are a hundred and fifty thousand visitors a year. I don't know. That's pretty high. It's pretty high." You know, they were trying to sell the acquisition as, as a benefit to our tourist economy. I said, "Well, we definitely have a tourist economy, but, guys, you're gonna have to make a lot of improvements." And they do plan to put a big R V park in there. You know, they have all these grand ideas, which will help, but they've got to fund it, and, you know, who knows when that'll happen.
And look at the infrastructure that we don't have already, and that's just gonna compound the problem we already discussed this morning even more. Yeah. And then how much money will we lose in tax revenue when the state owns?
Well, I mean, it's ag land now, so it's not, you know, millions of dollars, but I, I know we could find out. I just, I don't know. It's ag land. It's, you know, it's, it's not an overwhelming amount of money.
Seventeen hundred and fifty dollars?
Is that what it is?
A dollar an acre.
A dollar an acre, seven-
It might be. It might be.
That ain't a fun.
But it's the future, it's the future. I mean, you know, Commissioner Bolt, when this is acquired, just like the St. Joe had, I mean, they were, they had a very, you know, ambitious scheme for when they would develop their property, but over time, had it worked out, you know, Marina Village by itself had two thousand units up there. I mean, there was, there was some land in this acquisition that has had and has significant, uh, potential for development value. The Lochne Bay area, uh, has great fishing, and there's apparently a bluff up there with some deeper water that, that if they develop, if they buy this and develop it as a park, then maybe that will provide an additional water access. They could, you know, because St. Joe did this analysis, and they knew where they could put a boat ramp in and have a marina without dredging. So, clearly, there's some, some value for access up there, and so we'll just see how fast that occurs.
I do want to reinforce the need for building infrastructure for a boat ramp, for our harbor leases and other recreational issues. It's very important. That's huge. That's huge.
I've always, uh, Mr. Chairman, I've always wanted to see some homes built in that area. Thereby broadening our tax base, thereby lowering everybody's taxes and the amount of taxes you have to pay because more people are paying. Not to broaden the tax base and, and, you know, generate a bunch more money, but to actually spread the cost of what we're doing now out. But that ain't happening no more. And that's the only place you got you can expand. So seventeen thousand acres now is gone.
Yeah, the only two other areas that have, you know, sort of a concrete development potential is right around Apalachicola. And then either further west, uh, which the, with the Mormon church all owns. And I, I, I think both these areas are really not ever going to be developed. Anyway, I just want to bring you up to date. There'll be a public comment period once the state acquires it. It'll be managed by Ballpoint State Park and followed by the Forest Service. And so all those details are still being worked out.
You know, this is a very telling example of how we have to really be careful honoring our comprehensive plan here in Franklin County. As we look at these different zoning changes and issues like that, we really do have a precious little left land in order to plan correctly.
Yeah, I, Commissioner Bolt, I mean, and I shouldn't even get into this conversation because it's premature, but, you know, some of the things that may happen, and I've been here actually, uh, June first, nineteen eighty-eight, thirty-two years ago, was the first day I ever arrived in Franklin County. So my, my thirty-second year is now starting with you all. So I've seen quite a bit of change in this county. And one of the things, you know, and I say it now, we may have to revisit. We, we have some rules that we set in place to protect the horse industry. We still want to keep those, but at the time we set those, we didn't have all the infrastructure we have now. It may be with sewer and water in a variety more areas that we go back and look at some of the zoning issues. Because as land becomes less available and more people want to move here, there are some things that may have to change. And I, I mentioned this, the one unit break, I'll be honest with you, when you have sewer and water available. It may be that that sort of stuff has to be revisited because we're just going to run out of land for affordable housing, especially for things off the water. But that's the future. Okay, that, that's, that was the big surprise that happened last week.
All right.
Alan, one question my constituent asked, is, are those sand fences available for beach, is it dune restoration or dune recovery?
Well, there's none, by the county. I have a little photograph I provided as if there was, uh, sand fencing is available commercially in, in, in the, in the marketplace.
I see. It's not, nothing that the county is supplying.
We aren't supplying.
Okay.
Now, ultimately, when we do the beach restoration project, dune restoration project, we might be, we certainly plan to have that. But that's, that's some of that restore money that we're working for and be countywide. We're still in that planning process.
Our next on the agenda, be the county coordinator, Mr. Mike.
Page, page five.
I meant, Mr. Mr. Michael Morone.
The second, yeah, I was like, yeah, I'm sorry, sir. Uh, page five, starting with item nineteen, uh, Chairman Lockley has signed the local state of emergency declarations for the week starting May twenty-fifth. And yesterday, June first, I see board action to ratify his signature on both of those local state of emergencies.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Two, Master and Paris. All in favor? All opposed, that passes unanimous.
All right, item twenty, Superintendent Yoder sent a letter asking the county to consider waiving the permit fees for proposed new building on the consolidated school campus for the welding program. Her letter explains that this new facility would allow more students to participate in the program, the creation of a night program for adults seeking certification, and onsite certification testing, which would stop the need for travel for testing, which, which they have to do now. Uh, Mr. Floyd Roberts, the school's district's facility manager, discussed this project with Steve Patterson, your county's billing inspector, and he's good with it. So I'm asking the board to waive the associated permit fees for the school district's proposed new building for the welding program. They will still pull a permit, we just won't charge them any fees.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Master. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes unanimous.
I've, I've had quite a few people over the last year asking about this welding program outside of the schools. That's, that's a very good thing for the county, not just for the school system, for the county. Uh, twenty-one, at your May nineteenth regular meeting, the board opened and read aloud bids for the Carabelle, uh, County Road sixty-seven Tallahassee Street Sidewalk Improvement Project. Mr. Kurington has reviewed all of the bids and recommends awarding the contract to the lowest responsive bidder, M of Tallahassee Incorporated, for the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. D O T has concurred with his recommendation. Board action to accept his recommendation and award the bid, the project to M of Tallahassee.
So move.
Got a motion on the floor by, where was it, you, Bert?
Yep.
Commissioner Bert, second by Commissioner Master. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes unanimous.
Item twenty-two, commissioners, at an earlier meeting, the board was notified that District Two's seat on the Weems Board of Directors was vacant due to a resignation. Commissioner Bolt is nominating Dr. Walter David Harris. He resides at, uh, twelve forty-eight Angus Morrison Road in Alligator Point to fill that vacant seat. An account of Dr. Harris's education, qualification, and previous experience was included in your packet. Mr. Walker, your CEO at Weems, has received the same information. Board action to appoint Dr. Harris as District Two's representative on Weems Board of Directors.
So move.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bert, second by Commissioner Master. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes unanimous.
Thank you, commissioners, that was a turning point.
Uh, Commissioner, we already addressed twenty-three. Item twenty-four, the Carabelle History Museum is submitting an application to the Division of Historic Resources for a small matching grant for heritage education project on the shipwrecks of Dog Island. You should like that. The museum is asking for a letter of support from the county for this application and will be responsible for the match if they receive the grant.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Master, second by Commissioner Bolt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes unanimous.
Next, item twenty-five, the county received a request to sign a letter of support to President Trump for his consideration and awarding Dr. John Gorey the Presidential Citizens Medal to the physician, scientist, inventor, and humanitarian. As most are aware, Dr. Gorey settled in Apalachicola in eighteen thirty-three and was widely known as the inventor of the ice machine machine and was considered the father of air conditioning and refrigeration.
So move. Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris, second by Commissioner Master. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes unanimous.
Next three items are basically information items, your H H R P and ship, big package advertisements are going to, gone out or going out, so you guys could do that. Commissioner Jones might want to speak for a minute or so about, um, item twenty-seven, which was notes from the A R P's executive meeting.
Yeah, I would if that's okay. Is it okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, so we had, uh, we actually met in person the executive committee, but everybody else was on the phone. Uh, we haven't met probably for, I don't know, two or three months. I think February was the last time we met. So the big thing that I want to make sure this board's aware of, there are two things. Number one, the Franklin ninety-eight coastal restoration project, that they, that has been talked about and presented this board several times. And they started doing the initial test phases. They actually have been awarded construction funds for that project to the tune of fifteen million dollars.
Is that the living shoreline you're referring to?
That has been awarded funding to the tune of fifteen million.
For Franklin County area?
Yep, yes, sir. Between East Pointe and Carabelle. So I want to make sure the board was aware of that. Uh, they also have, they have a revolving loan fund that they've done for years. I will tell you this, under current administration, everything in the portfolio, nothing has defaulted in a decade. Our portfolio for the A R P C for this nine-county region is about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. They just got, uh, in between all this COVID stuff, they got word at the, the planning council that, uh, there was money through E D O. They are doubling that fund. They're giving them additional five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Again, these are for revolving loan funds for this nine-county region, and it's for businesses that can maybe not get funds the traditional way. Then it's, it's been handled through A R P C. I have the privilege as your representative, since I'm on the executive board, I actually also get to weigh in on the approval of those loan processes, just so you're aware. Now, before all this happened, they had applied through E D A, through Hurricane Michael disaster funds. They still haven't heard back yet, but there's a possibility they're going to receive another million dollars to put in that fund, uh, for revolving loan fund. Now, the, the new money to E D O has said they're giving the five eighty. They're talking about writing it up in such a way that they can actually do it with zero percent interest to businesses in our communities. The, the difference being, if they do that, they want these monies distributed before the end of this year to businesses in this nine-county region to help them get through things they're going through. Uh, while we're talking about this, I would like to direct county staff, that being you, sir, and you, Ms. Erin. I, I think that the county actually has monies on our books from years ago when we were involved in this revolving loan fund. I'd like to find out what they are and find out what process we will need to do to, to contribute to this fund. As I've asked, uh, Chris Rito, Executive Director, he said they would have no problem as a council, if there's any money here we want to do that with, they have no problem earmarking those funds to be distributed only to Franklin County.
Just want to jump that. So basically, in nineteen ninety-four, some Alberto came through here and Franklin County was the recipient of some funds directed from the federal government to run a revolving loan program. We, we leased it, well, we, we sub-granted out, sub-warded out to the regional planning council, then to administer the, the revolving loan program. And there was a set amount of money available for, for administration. When that money was run through, the, the money was handed out. Uh, there was supposed to be some, you know, collection, people did various parts of collateral. And we're talking nineteen ninety-four, so we're talking twenty-six years ago. And, uh, some years after the program got started, the, the revolving, the administration money for that ran out. And the A R P C, a different administration, a long time ago, came to the county and said, here, you know, there's no more money to run the program here, it's yours. And they basically handed us this box of files that were delinquent and old, and that was twenty-six years ago, they were delinquent and old. So they're, so my recommendation is, the money that we've collected, I would gladly recommend that we turn that money back to the A R P C, whatever we've collected, including the dead bio, the dead file box of being fined it, and say, here, it's all yours again. You run it and, and use it as best you can, because the money's been sitting frozen in our hands for twenty-six years.
There is about three hundred thousand dollars in that account, which is just limited to the revolving loan program. So, um, it's something that hasn't had much activity in many years.
Okay.
And will they be able to use it?
Yep.
They'd be able to use it in a loan, loan program.
Yes, I'm saying a loan program.
Yes, sir. It directly contributes to people in Franklin County. It would be available.
Well, uh, Mr. Jones, who, uh, like what businesses will get this?
Any business wants to apply? It could be, it could honestly be any business. We, we have done, since I've been there, there was a brewer that, uh, we helped give like sixty thousand dollars to expand his business. Uh, that he'd already started like a, in other words, he's brewing his own beer. Uh, he's been doing well with it, making all his payments on time. We helped, uh, after Hurricane Michael, we helped several grocery stores in the region stabilize their stock and the inventory on the shelves and, and our, you know, building damages, different stuff that they couldn't get through insurance. All of those have still been paid on time. So it's, it's directly affected, you know, and, and it's, it's literally any business. The caveat with this fund is they can't receive traditional funding. They've either been turned down or they can't, you know what I mean? It's one of those things.
Okay.
And what, what happened in the original program is a lot of them people didn't pay their debt.
Right.
Which got the fund down so low that we couldn't continue the program because there wasn't no money to continue the program.
Right.
Some of them did pay, but a bunch of them didn't pay. Or there would be more than three hundred thousand dollars left. The county, the county just kind of backed out of putting this money out there again because we didn't have no way to collect it when the people went belly up. As he's saying, when I served on the A R P C board before Mr. Jones, uh, Commissioner Jones, I was aware of the program and got to see everybody that applied for the program. And as he said, everybody's paid it back. It just seems like we always had an issue with Franklin County paying the money back, you know? So, you know, as, as the county stands up and says, yeah, we'd like to see some businesses get it. Businesses need to understand, they need to make these payments on time and get the money back for the next, uh, business to be able to access the money. If you don't pay it back, then other businesses that might need, can't access the money because you ain't paid it back. So it ain't a free program. You gotta pay this money back in order to keep the program going.
It is on.
So anybody that you recommend come to, or any of us commissioners recommend go to A R P C for funding, needs to also recommend, you know, you gotta understand, this ain't a free program. You need to make these payments and you need to put it back where you got it from for the next business entity that might need a loan to, to jumpstart their business.
That's right.
Well, this is where you don't get nobody else a loan, you know, money, but that's the only way you can get this loan, right?
Yeah, there's still criteria you have to meet. In other words, it's, and that's individual, it's so individual, just as much as people's businesses are individualized.
Right.
Because people have different needs. So there's still criteria you have to meet. It's not just, the bank won't give me money, so, you know what I mean?
No, I know, they're gonna just give them the money. What I'm saying, if, if they're turned down at other places for no loan, y'all could check them out as if they able to get it from y'all.
That is correct, yeah, yes, sir.
Almost like a, almost like an option of last resort.
Right. And it's, and it's also, in the time I've been serving on A R P C, it's never been, this is a set amount, this is as much as you can get. You have to show, again, it's individualized, like the business. You have to show your need for your ask.
And you also have to show how you're gonna pay it back.
There you go.
You don't just go up and say, I couldn't get a loan at the bank, so can y'all give me some money? If you've got a history of not repaying these loans, there's reason the bank won't give you a loan, then you're probably not gonna get this loan. You, you know what I'm saying?
Yep, it's a process.
It's a process. Yeah, the reason I was asking, you know, because some of them had applied for the small business loans through what come out through the COVID nineteen. They didn't get it, so that's the reason I was asking.
The only other thing I'll mention before we leave this, Mr. Chairman, just so the rest of the board is aware, it's in the notes. So this is something brand new that started and actually started during the middle of this pandemic. A R P C has officially started a housing program. They've hired people, they have staff, they are administering right now the hurricane housing recovery program for Calhoun County. And from talking to Mr. Gene Bailey, which is commissioner there, they're ready to give them their ship program to administer. They go there two days a week and work in conjunction with somebody that's local, full-time, and, but they're the minister of the program, just so the board is aware.
Okay, yes, sir. Uh, twenty-eight is about the wetlands report. We get that for the annual report, just, just for word information. A couple of other things, though. So, uh, we're starting to receive complaints, uh, it's not our office, not responsible, but complaints from neighbors of people who have the short-term rentals, the R B Os, you know, that, that sort of thing. So what Courtney is going to do is put on our website the, uh, the contact information for Secretary Halsey's office, you know, um, so that, and we're to direct everybody there to the website. So when they have a complaint, some of the complaints are basically somebody checked out, because we got one from Carabelle area. Somebody checked out at two, the, uh, the new, uh, family checked in at two thirty and the cleaners weren't even there yet. Well, you know, based on the letter we sent to the governor, that is not what we agreed to. That's not what the short-term rentals agreed to. But instead of calling us, which we, our hands are tied with that, we want them to call, uh, D B P R. And we're going to make sure that information is headlined on our website when you open it up so you can get that contact information.
They were standing on the porch waiting on them to clean. It takes an hour and forty-five minutes trying to clean the, or clean the house before the other people come in. So it takes longer than an hour, forty-five minutes to clean, uh, three-bedroom, two-bath house.
Yeah, so, you know, that's, again, that's not what, what we agreed to. And the last thing, so when we get here for your next meeting, uh, you, you might, uh, you might see some markings on, on, on the benches here. So I met with, uh, Mr. Bill Wells, the trial marshal for our, our region for the courts. And so they're starting with the courtroom across the street, then they're coming here to mark off what they consider is safe distance seating. Commissioners, basically, uh, that's where he's sitting, that, that's going to be off limits. So the front bench of both sides, you're going to use every other long bench, and there's only two people allowed on the long benches. The ones in the back, which you have to skip one, one person on those benches. That greatly reduces the amount of people that we can have in here, even as you're, like this morning, you saw your staff filled up a lot of the benches. So it's, it's, I guess what I'm trying to say in a nice way, it might be a while before we could consider letting the public in because just your staff alone, people on the agenda, imagine what happens when we do do in July, do the, um, the budget workshops. You know, you have, there you have your, your constitutials, you have your, your governmental, and if you do the N G Os, they could be in here too. All that, we're gonna have to be very careful as to how, you know, we schedule those things. So I'm just putting you guys on notice. When you see the markings, that's, that's what they are. And commissioners, that does it for me, unless you guys have something for me.
Anybody got anything for Mr. Morone? Keep up the good work.
Try to have a short meeting today, commissioners, that didn't work out for me.
Next on the agenda, be the county attorney, Mr. Michael Schu.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, board members, the only thing I have is to put into the record a email I received from a constituent in Landmark, a Ms. Baldwin, expressing her opinion concerning the Dollar General store and that pending litigation. So with that, it is a two-page document. It was dated yesterday. I will deliver this to the clerk. With that, I have nothing further to say.
All right, anybody got anything from Mr. Schu? Public, I mean, uh, commissioner comment?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have two points I want to make, if I may.
Go ahead, sir.
Relative to the workshop that we discussed earlier this morning.
I want to, um, also go on the record to recognize the documentation that's been given to us, to me, regarding, uh, suggested parking, parking signage there along Ballpoint Road, and, uh, the spirit of that, of restricting access to, um, some of those beach access points. This workshop will serve as a forum to begin to organize, um, in a more logical way, what's, what our signage issues are and our parking issues are there at Alligator Point and Ballpoint. This workshop should also recognize the fact that, um, the multi-use pathway will begin its design and its, its, its work at some point, and that also present, presents a lot of other parking challenges. So I see a coming together of, uh, community leaders, Alligator Point, Ballpoint, St. Teresa, and helping us develop this plan as we go forward in that workshop. I wanted to recognize the hard work that many folks at Alligator Point have been doing in this area.
And that, that workshop, we talked about, it's gonna be between the commissioners. It, it's gonna be us, it ain't gonna be the public. It's us trying to get it, get, you know, get us lined up first. Then, once we get together, we can present some to the public, right?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, I just, and, and I follow that, that logic, I just want to embrace the public with us, just so you know.
Then the second point is...
They need to bring the information, I guess, whatever information you bring. You got something for us?
Yep.
I don't want them to think they're gonna, the public gonna be in, we just, we trying to figure stuff out now.
Understand.
So we can present some to them, right now, we ain't got nothing to present to them.
You got a lot on your hands with this, Mr. Bird, because really, they don't want nobody on the island, on the point, really. I mean, they would really rather shut it down to all beachcombers, you know?
Understand.
That's what they really want.
Well, I, I, I don't think it's quite that radical, I believe that there are, there is a lot of reasonable thinking about what access points there should be in Alligator Point and how that relates to the park, and I, it's a, it's a large dynamic.
Well, I understand, you know, what they want, I, I'd be upset with them the way they getting their property treated too, you know, we just gotta be careful what we do with it.
Sure, yeah. Now, I think we're customizing a lot of our thinking, not necessarily does everything uniformly apply across the entire county, and so I, we're on, you know, continue to access good communication and, and community involvement in all those areas for us.
Yeah, I've seen some pictures of where they was up under a man's house, the huge restroom, left the garbage, left the...
A lot of dysfunction, I, I agree with that.
It wasn't nice looking under the man's house.
Yeah, I heard about it, sure do.
He was upset, and I don't blame him.
Yeah, I understand, absolutely, and I want to honor that concern.
Yeah, we gotta start somewhere, we gotta get, well...
We'll work it.
We, it, it, it got to come together, I mean, it just can't be like it was if...
That's right.
Forty years ago, there wasn't nobody on the island, neither one of them islands, it wasn't that many people.
The only problem is with Alligator Point, Commissioner, where are they gonna build the parking? And think it's a long ways from the beach, it's right in front of the rock, they can't go be able to use that beach area right there, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
How are they gonna get from this area, you know, down to the beach? That's gonna be the problem.
Well, Commissioner, I don't want to, because I'm, I'm still at Point Mary stage, I haven't talked to Commissioner Bolt about this. I mean, eh, the county owns that property where we're gonna put a parking lot, and, and it's possible that we could make some minor improvements out there with the county group and make it somewhat of a beach environment, I mean, it's possible.
Okay.
And so I'm looking to that, uh, before I make any public statements, I mean, so...
Yeah, but you know what I was talking about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not gonna work having out of parking, they expect, it's not gonna work to have, go two miles down the road, that's not gonna happen. So wherever the parking space is created, you better have a beach access point there, because that's where they're gonna go.
Cause like the man said, they gonna bring golf carts or, or four-wheelers to get down there and do the same parking.
And we'll have more accidents, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, appreciate your insight.
Well, we gonna, we're gonna.
Oh, we, yes, I appreciate the, the commission's support.
Yeah, we got to start somewhere.
I agree.
I mean, it gonna be the same thing, St. George, and they gonna... You gonna look at one day and you gonna have a problem with, oh, they, on Carabelle for parking and stuff.
Well, I can, I can assure you.
Care about, it's hurting.
Well, I know the folks at Alligator Point are really committed to partnering with this commission, and I'll be helping you facilitate that.
Commissioner, one of the ideas I gave some of the people in Alligator Point the other day, I, I was born and raised in Gainesville, and Gainesville didn't have a beach, but Gainesville had a big community that wanted to go to the beach, and the beach we always went to was Flagler Beach, it was sixty miles away, and we, everybody, every Saturday and Sunday, load up cars, and we flooded Flagler Beach. And so I suggested to people at Alligator Point, go call Flagler Beach and see what they've learned, because they've had sixty years of inland people coming to their community. And so there's, I think there's plenty of examples around here, of coastal towns that have already having, been having Dave trippers come in there, let's see what they have done, so we don't have to...
You know, um, stop after this, but Carabelle, we really have no businesses. We, we got, what, two or three, four at the most, we don't really got a whole lot. Eastport's the number one growing place in the county, Eastport's booming, we have nothing. You go drive through Carabelle at five-thirty, you think you're driving through the desert.
Yeah, Commissioner, the problem is Carabelle is not quite far enough from Tallahassee to have to stop to buy anything, and they're on the way to the beach.
That's it, they going right by us, and we ain't got no area for no businesses, we got that one little little area right there, and that's it.
Yeah, it's, it's, Carabelle's got a tough, it's a challenge.
We're hurting right there, I mean, for business-wise.
Mr. Chairman, just one other issue in my district.
Yes, sir.
We have some dysfunctional housing issues that are going on in our district, in my district. Um, in one area, there is questionable sanitary waste disposal of a, of a individual that's, uh, almost camping in the residential area and using a lot of, uh, um, metal recycling activities. In another area, there is, um, a huge amount of just trash on, uh, at twenty-two seventy-seven Oak Street, uh, and, and old refrigerators and old metals and old boats and old cars and all those issues. And then there's another area where there's a, uh, family that has, um, ostensibly pulled a building permit and, uh, disobeyed the building permit by bringing in a, uh, I think a prefabricated storage building, hooking up electricity and visiting that storage building as a place to, uh, stay when they're visiting the Landmark area. These are very dysfunctional issues, and, and they, again, ring of the need for some sort of code compliance. Remember, we've talked about it over the, over the years. We need to deal with this issue, uh, and, and I, I want to sponsor and I want to compliment the hard work that's been done by many local residences in bringing this to my attention. You have, you have a mailing packet today of this one particular dysfunctional issue I'm discussing. The approach for this appears to be that we get together with, uh, leaders here in the community and here in the county and, and begin to develop a plan. Uh, I would say a county attorney should be with us, uh, I would welcome, uh, I, let's see, I wanted to, I wanted to have, um, the sheriff involved and myself and, um, Amy Kelly to come up with a, a, a movement forward on how we start dealing with many of these dysfunctional issues that are happening in our county. And I'd like to, uh, charge our county staff to put all that together, and, uh, and I, I'm also calling for my district activist folks to get together and produce community plans to bring to our, our commission. Rather than spotty pleading, we have it, we have a consorted effort. We see that already done very well at St. George Island, and they have a community plan that they brought to us with long-range planning. And I'm looking forward for that to happen in my district as well, particularly in, uh, Alligator Point, Ballpoint, St. Teresa, and in Landmark Village area.
I got them clean the front yard up, I thought they was gonna clean the back side and the other side up. Haven't ever cleaned it, they did clean the front part up, I carried them dumpsters out there. Michael had them to get the dumpsters, and they cleaned the front, we thought they was gonna keep on and clean the rest, but it's hadn't been touched.
Yeah.
I get the same calls that you get with that, but we tried to clean that one area up, but it's, I guess it's gone as far as it's going.
Well, I'd like to keep the momentum going on how we can think of some quality positive ways to manage this issue.
The next step would be through the attorney to get that stuff done, what you want done. They done been asked to do it, and, and, and all, and only other way is to go through the attorney and do it.
I understand. And the attorney and I have had some discussions on that and what, what the negative and positive fallouts of that can be. So can we get together a roundtable discussion and a committee together to start talking about residential dysfunction, code compliance, disobedience? It's beginning to really cascade. And when, when you saw that, how our, our landmass in many ways is shrinking and how we really just have a little bit of landmass to work with here in the county, it seems like we really need to preserve more of these ordinances than ever before.
What do you, no, I can't make no motion, but I will say, we, we get to one and you be over the...
Well, what I was gonna say, Commissioner, I'll start off with, with Commissioner Bolt and get these people around it, let's deal with these specific items first on a staff, uh, level, and then after that, you know, we could have a larger discussion sometime down the road about countywide. But let's deal with these, since it's, you know, he's basically saying his constituents are complaining about these things, let's deal with those first and see where we are.
That'll be good, then we'll put you over the whole county.
There you go.
You'll be the head and spirit in, in your community.
I hear you. Well, we're bringing some life to these concerns, and that's, that's the spirit of that.
Yes, sir. All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Leading the general.